Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 1st meeting of the Concord Select Board. I would remind everybody that the meeting is being broadcast and recorded. So the first order of business this evening is the consent agenda, which includes town accountant warrants, our minutes from meeting on May 6th and May 20th, tour guide licenses, gifted acceptance for Mary Ann Goslovich of $2,500 for the council on aging gift account, thank you very much, and one day special licenses, all from Fidelity Investments on September 4th, 5th, 9th through 11th, 16th through 18th, 23rd through 26th, the 30th, and October 1st through the 3rd, 5 to 8 p.m. at 40 Westford Road, wine and malt.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We do not have a town manager with us this evening. Ms. Hodges is on vacation. The next item on the agenda is my remarks. I have just a couple of quick remarks, just to remind everybody that picnic in the park is on the 4th of July. It's always a fun event to come out. And I will, we have a number of miscellaneous correspondence, which ordinarily I would take up later in our meeting, but they are germane to some of the topics we are taking up. So I just want to acknowledge them, that we received correspondence about the Concord Business Partnership, the middle school building committee, and the capital planning board from a number of folks. And I want to thank them all for writing. There were a lot of really good comments in there about all three of those. So I'm hoping we'll be able to incorporate those into our meeting. So that's the only remarks I have. What I'd like to do now is we have a public hearing that begins at 7:05, but it's not quite 7:05 yet. So I think I would like to move to the acceptance of an access easement, item number eight, at 47 Warner Street. There's no way to hear, I presume.
Yeah, I would perhaps give them a little bit because they probably expected the public hearings before that.
Oh, so should we wait?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's do that then. All right, let's move to item number 11, which I think we can do without too much difficulty, which is, for those of you that don't have an agenda, finalizing the 2020 annual town meeting dates. So we had discussed at our last meeting, because of a lot of scheduling conflicts, religious holidays, school vacations, that the time that worked for us was essentially the last week in April. And so the town meeting would be the dates of April 27th, 8th, 9th, and 30th. I have checked with the superintendent of schools, and I have checked with the town moderator, and both of those folks have agreed that those dates will work. So if there's any discussion or comment about that? If not, then I entertain a motion.
I move to schedule the 2020 annual town meeting for April 27th, 28th, 29th, and 30th, if necessary. The location for the annual town meeting will be Concord Carlisle Regional High School.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, I know it passes unanimously. So I think it's 7:05-ish. Well, ask the folks who are here for the 7:05 public hearing, the store of inflammable fluid license at 210 Monument Street, who is here to speak to that request? Is there anyone here? Please come up. And if I could get a motion to open the public hearing?
Is there a move?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, folks. So for the record, would you identify yourselves?
Herbert King.
Michael McDermott from Eastern Propane.
Kenneth Fromer with Kissler Nap Builders.
And can you tell us? Okay. So please go ahead and tell us what this request is about.
About one year ago, we got a, Eastern Propane achieved a underground storage license to have more than 2,000 gallons of propane at 210 Monument Farm.
I recall.
I was not part of that process back then. In the months since, some of the scope of the work up there has added significant BTU load to the, to the full demand, and the amount of storage that is there will not support it. We need to have bigger tanks which hold more fuel in order to vaporize 5.7 million BTUs.
What could you do with that many BTUs?
Let's see. Off the top of my head, there's two large boilers to provide snowmelt on two separate driveways, two large generators for backup emergency power. There's a pool heater. There's a pool enclosure that's heated with propane. There's a building that's heated with propane, there's a couple buildings heated with propane, actually. There's, both those buildings have residential on-demand hot water systems on propane, clothes dryers on propane, kitchen stoves on propane, a commercial kitchen with commercial kitchen appliances that all run on propane.
Commercial kitchen?
It's not a commercial kitchen. It's a residential.
I was gonna say, that was...
But it's that type of gear.
You mean it's a really big fancy kitchen?
Yes, and propane in its, in its normal state needs temperature and surface area on the tanks to make that liquid vaporize. And that's where it all becomes the mathematical part of it.
So as I recall, the last time, there were two 1,000, is that correct, gallon tanks?
Originally, there was one underground 1,000, and Eastern changed it to be three underground 1,000s in two separate locations. One location would have a pair, and the other location would have the single. What we're proposing to do now is take the 1,000s out and special order 2,000 gallon cylinders and put them in the same spots in the same setup.
So you have a total of six?
Yes, we'll have a total of six. But it will be the same amount of connections, the same amount of fittings, just becomes...
So three tanks?
Yeah, it comes a little more steel and a little more fuel in them. It's the safest way to do it.
Well, I was gonna ask, it seems that, is there a risk?
We do not feel there's any risk.
And the fire department is away here.
The fire department and everybody else has signed off on that.
Yeah, the fire department did some research. They called the state fire marshal's office, had a conversation there. They made a couple of phone calls to some other customers that I have, that have large quantities on their properties, talked to those fire departments of those towns, and ultimately, they felt comfortable with the plan.
So I noticed one of the stipulations was that there was no vehicles that could traverse on top of these tanks. So how is that being protected or marked?
They're, they're off the driveway areas. They're accessible for fueling purposes, but they're not, they're adjacent to the areas. The main one at the, in the front of the property is gonna have bollards and landscaping protecting them. So if a car inadvertently goes off the driving space, they can't even come to the area where the tanks are.
Okay.
Same way with the back, because they're separated on two different parts of the property. The one on the backside is, they're again off the entranceway, and it's, it's protected by landscaping and large boulders and stuff like that, the same way. So there's no way a car can go and stay, even park on top of where the tanks are located.
And if, if the house were to change ownership and a future owner wanted to remove them, how? Is that pretty standard? It's not?
They would have to change equipment, just whether it's the generators or some of the other, and go to oil for all the heating systems and stuff like that. So it's unlikely, just because of the demand on them, but they, they could. And they could, they would call a company like Eastern and have them switched over.
We would, if they wanted, someone wanted them removed, we would drain them, de-vaporize them, and dig them up and lift them back up.
And as I recall, your question, that was the same question that was asked last time when you put the third 1,000 gallon tank in, was, wasn't driving them? Right, we do have a letter from the fire chief, and we do have a letter from NRC that, Susan?
Yeah, I just had a question. Is this a newly constructed home, or is it refitting for the...
It's, it's been a series of renovations and additions and just kind of evolving project over the last few years.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Are there any questions from the public? All right, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
For a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right, any further discussion on this motion? If not, then I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the application from Eastern Propane on behalf of Ziad Faris to amend existing license for the underground storage of liquefied petroleum gas at 210 Monument Farm Road. Approval is subject to the standard requirements of the Concord Fire Department.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next public hearing we have this evening is a public hearing, Storage of Inflammable Fluid License for Underground Storage of Liquefied Petroleum Gas. Lorden on behalf of Amy Bonner, 360 Great Meadows Road. Good evening. Please identify yourselves.
My name's Tim Sirdy. I'm from Lorden Propane.
Thank you.
Amy Bonner, homeowner, 360 Great Meadows Road.
Greg Blas, Thought Farms.
Thank you very much. So please explain what...
Yeah, we have, it's just, this is more due to storage. They had a 4,000 gallon underground propane tank. We'd like to put in three 1,000 underground gallon propane tanks. They sit off the driveway. The tanks will be protected. Couple of reasons why we want to put the tanks in. One, it's just because of the driveway, the wintertime itself, trying to get deliveries up there would be easier to make a bigger delivery, make it in the summertime. At that point, no, there's no issues with the driveway. Second reason is just they're gonna have a generator as well with the heating system, with hot water, cooking. They also need, if they lose power, as the builder can tell us, is a...
The septic system is, the septic field is uphill from where the, from where it's, yes, there's, that's where there's a pump that brings the F1 up the hill. So it's very, you know, it's very important that the, in the event of a power outage, that the power is maintained to the building.
And it would be not to oversize the driveway, but in the wintertime, trying to get a bobtail up there could be a little tricky. It's just the driveway's really tight, it winds. So just having them more storage, and they did previously to this, they had a 4,000 gallon underground propane, ah, oil tank, oil tank at the time.
Say that again, I didn't hear you.
They, they, at one time, they had a 4,000 gallon underground oil tank, which they're now switching to propane. And listening to the last questions, the tanks are underground, the tanks will be protected by large yardstone, so there's no way that a vehicle could go into the tanks, be parked on the tanks, damage the hoods in any way. It's a, it's, it's safe, it's up the code as far as NFPA 54 and the local codes to the town of Concord. So I feel...
Are you also removing the existing tank?
That was already taken care of.
The prior homeowner took it out.
Previous folks. Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So first, there was a 4,000 gallon oil tank.
Correct.
That was removed. Now you have a 4,000 gallon propane tank?
No.
No. What do you have now?
Three 1,000 gallon underground propane tanks.
That's what you have now?
Yes.
But you want to change it to?
No, that's it.
No, that's it. It's three 1,000 gallon underground propane tanks.
They're not hooked up yet?
Correct.
Right.
Yes, yes.
She's asking, what, what is resistance right now?
What is your fuel now? Right, right this minute, what fuel do you have? If the oil tanks...
The house is under construction.
Oh!
Oh, sorry. I wasn't following, sorry.
That was the, that was the missing piece.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I wasn't following that.
Any other questions? Are there any questions from the public? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, do you have, is there any other comments or questions? All the paperwork is in order on this. We have the appropriate... If there's no additional comments, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the application from Lorden on behalf of Amy Bonner for underground storage of liquefied petroleum gas license at 360 Great Meadows Road. Approval is subject to the standard requirements of the Concord Fire Department.
A second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our third public hearing this evening is a continuing public hearing, alteration of license premises associated with existing Section 15 retail package store wine and malt license on the second floor of Concord Market. And so if I could have a motion to open this public hearing? So second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I would note that the applicant has requested a continuance to July 15th of this public hearing. So if I could have a motion to continue the public hearing to July 15th, that would be great.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And our fourth public hearing for this evening is a public hearing for the alteration of license premises associated with existing Section 12 Restaurant All Alcohol License and Outdoor Patio Seating for Concord Brewery Doing Business as Rapschalian at 208 Pittsburgh Turnpike. I saw them come in. Come on up. That's like two meetings in a row for you, my friend.
Seeing you guys a lot this month.
So please identify yourself.
My name is Peter Daniel with Concord Brewery.
All right, did I get a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, so we had requested to see if we can do a outside terrace outside of 208 Pittsburgh Turnpike Road in Concord. The location's been there many years now. It's been utilized as a lunch area, outside area for tenants of the Toronto business building. And our landlord, who is a Toronto family, had mentioned, if you guys apply for it, we would approve or support you guys in having a little outside area, which is seasonal, of course, which is behind the restaurant.
Okay. And just for the record, in this public setting, how many, what's the seating going to be?
We would probably keep the, or we, depending on what, what you guys, you know, let us know, we would keep the existing five tables that are there now. They're picnic-style tables, so it's similar to the same theme that Beryl Farm does. So we're not altering really that area. We feel it, it's enough, so you can, you know, we, we put 30 on the license, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't exceed 30, so.
And you do this right away? Are you planning on trying to get it in for the season here?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's July, and a lot of people around here leave. But if it's similar to our music, I was here four weeks ago on the music license. We've done music maybe once. I don't think we've done it twice since, so it was more of a, to have it available and have the right paperwork, just in case we do it. So we're not sure music's gonna work there, acoustic, that is, of course. And similarly, we, we think that the outside seating can work. It is 30 feet, and we've done everything that the application, the ABCC, has required us to do. We have a delineated path that'll be corralled and so forth. So we'll follow all the requirements, but, you know, you never know if it works or not, so.
And it's gonna be full menu and the whole...
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be, so the food and beverage will still be sourced from Rapschalian. It'll have it, if, if we move forward with it, we will have always a designated server. We'll follow the same guidelines, ABCC. So I'm not, you know, I'm definitely not worried, the landlord and I are not worried about safety concerns and noise concerns or health, border health concerns. That's the one piece that I'm 100% confident we'll abide by. What I'm concerned about is, you know, again, it's 30 feet behind the restaurant. Is it an awkward area?
Visual contact from the restaurant?
Yeah, so we would, if this was approved, we would put a, there's currently a door, it's not a public access door, it's a service door, which goes from the back of the kitchen, and you can see this area. So right now, it's a swinging door. We would make it a sliding door, so you could always see it, a glass sliding door, that way.
Well, I would, I would note, since you brought it up, that we have, as you, I'm sure you know, a note from the chief.
Correct.
Which is required for this kind of action. And he notes that because the premises are not observable totally from the inside, that it's gonna be necessary that there is somebody dedicated personnel that is always on-site outside in that patio when you're doing business.
Yeah, no, it's definitely...
That's something you can assure us of?
Yeah, we will always have a person. That, that, that's the easy one. I would like to take it a step further, and I would like to just be able to see it always. That's why I would like to put that door in. That's just more from a service standpoint. If I can't see it and the server can't see it, then, you know, maybe we forget there's a two-top out there or a family out there, and that just looks bad on hospitality, and so.
So do I remember correctly that you're gonna stay at 57, was it 57 seats?
Yeah, so we would never, exactly, so.
So how, how are you gonna manage that? So when they're not inside?
Yeah, so we, it's similar to what we do with Acton now, and we have another location just actually up the road on Starby Hill Road. We, there's two ways to go about the license. You could ask for a special license or you add capacity, but then that, you know, obviously opens up camera, obviously septic and border health and all that. We, we don't want to do that. We would, we want to stay at 57, and we're not worried for five days of the week. Friday and Saturday night, we're gonna have to be very diligent to make sure we don't exceed that. You know, during the weekdays, we, you know, we'll be okay. This, so...
Essentially, you're just gonna reconfigure your seating.
Yeah, so if there's 30 people outside, we don't have 30 people inside. So we do a pretty good job. We've been doing that in Acton for many years. So it will, it can be tough sometimes on a nice night, on a Saturday night, where, you know, you can get inside and outside, but...
Other question?
So you'll be very diligent by, what, what measures will you take?
So we have a reservation system where we can't exceed a certain amount, or we double book. So you have a reservation system that can blackout essentially hours or, or seats or so forth. So, you know, we know that we can't go over a certain amount, so.
You're saying most of your patrons use reservations?
So the two locations are different. In Acton, we're, we're old school. We do paper book, and we, we take it over the phone. In Concord, it's all online-based, so we have to make sure, we know, we can never go over a certain amount per shift.
Right, that's what I'm trying to figure out. It seems like a lot of people might just show up without a reservation.
Yeah, so if it's, it's a nice area up back there, I don't know if any of you have been there. I know you've, some of you have been to the restaurant. This is on the backside of the restaurant, facing Beryl Farm and facing that. So it's, it's a nice vista. So that, that's definitely gonna be a challenge, because I know we've had people already who know the Torontos, know us, like, can we go sit up? They see the tables out there, we can go sit there. So that's gonna be the biggest challenge, and that's gonna fall on me and Carlos, my manager, to make sure.
So how do people enter this area? Do they have to come through the restaurant?
They, they don't have to go through the restaurant, so there's, there, when you, I think, I might have put in the application some pictures. There's a delineated path that will lead you there. It's 30 feet from the, from the entrance, so it is, you know, 30 feet is...
Is there an enclosure of some type that you're gonna build?
If it gets approved, right now, it's, there's a couple buildings that enclose it, but if it gets approved, we would, we would take that further per ABCC rulings.
Yeah, that's a, that's a requirement.
Yeah.
Right.
That seating area would have to be enclosed by planters or a barrier.
Right, so do you have a plan, how you would enclose it?
Yeah, it would be all planters going around. So right now, it's on a 20 by 20 square foot, so it's like 400 square feet, pavers and brick. And we would enclose that whole area with the planters and a, and a little fencing area, low fencing area, so.
Additional questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any additional comments or questions? All right, I would entertain a motion then.
I move to approve the application from Concord Brewery Second Inc., Doing Business as Rapschalian, for the alteration of license premises associated with the existing Section 12 Restaurant All Alcohol License for outdoor patio seating located at 208 Pittsburgh Turnpike. Final approval is subject to ABCC approval.
Can I just make sure that we clarify?
All right, just one second. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Up to 30 seats outside?
Say what?
Up to 30 seats outside?
And we'll amend that motion to add up to 30 seats outside.
And your second is fine with that?
Second.
Any additional comments, questions?
Do, do we need to add then, with a total of 57 seats?
No, that's already, that's already in there.
It's already in, it's already in the application?
It's already in the application.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much, and good luck with it. I hope it works.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's, you know, hopefully it does. I appreciate, I've seen you guys a lot, so hopefully you don't see me for a few years.
Come in, we'll come in and try your patio. All right, thank you very much. On the next order of business, we'll cycle back to number eight, acceptance of an access easement at 47 Warner Street.
Good evening.
Good evening. For the record?
Delia Kay, Natural Resources Director for the town of Concord, and Alison Ailey, homeowner at 47 Warner Street.
Wow.
I've got two photographs that were on the application. So the...
Please.
The Aileys are the homeowners at 47 Warner Street, and they have received approval from the Natural Resources Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals to reconstruct the home, and that is under construction now. And as part of that project, they've done extensive invasive species removal and replanting, and they were very interested in gifting to the town an easement for the pedestrian, for the public to be able to come and view Warner's Pond. The photographs that you have in front of you, the top one is looking at the easement with your back to Warner's Pond. And the second one, the bottom photograph, is a picture of the benches facing Warner's Pond within the easement. The NRC was enthusiastic about this gift and accepted the easement at their June 19th meeting and is recommending the select board's approval of the easement.
Thank you, Delia, and thank you for, that's very generous of you and your family to do that. Greatly appreciate it. Warner Pond's such a pretty place, and making sure that the public has a chance to view it is a, is a good thing.
Looks beautiful.
Always getting prettier.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Just a quick one, and that is, I assume the access is off of Warner?
The access is off Warner Street, and it is, it's a 20-foot wide easement, so it doesn't go all the way to the pond. It's really just meant to be a place where people can go and sit from Warner Street, walk into the easement area, and be able to view the wildlife and the views of the pond.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Will they be aware of where that easement ends, so they don't, I mean, what, what do you, what if somebody wants to walk to the pond?
We have, we don't have signs yet, but we are going to have signs that discourage that, to have them stay on the lawn path. And past that, you get to the bank, like, and that's where we're trying to restore the, and so we don't really want people...
Going down there.
Going down there.
So there'll be signage?
There, there will be signage.
Okay.
Thanks, too, for getting the invaders out of there. Never-ending.
They've done a tremendous job.
Never-ending.
Yeah.
May I suggest on the sign that you put that the purpose why people can't go down there is restoration, that it's not just some capricious arbitrary reason or something?
Right.
I think people will be more likely to follow it if they know.
I, yeah, I think that was your, you suggested that as well? Yeah, we'll, we'll work with people on, on languaging that.
Additional comments?
No, I think they're grateful.
Love to have a motion then.
I move to accept the access easement between Gordon Thomas Alley III and Alison Y. Alley of 47 Warner Street, Concord, Massachusetts, together the grantor and the town of Concord, Massachusetts, acting by and through its Natural Resources Commission, acting as a conservation commission pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 8C as amended, having an address at 22 Monument... Chapter forty, Section eight C as amended, having an address at twenty-two Monument Square, Concord, Mass. Oh, one, seven, four, two. The grantee.
For a second.
Second.
Any additional questions or comments?
No. Can I just, um.
Yes.
Rather than accept, the select board is approving the, the easement.
To approve.
To approve the easement. You've accepted it.
Right. Thank you.
So with that amendment, striking the word accept, put in approve. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you, too, Delia. That's great.
Yeah, beautiful.
Uh, next, a request for funds to create two units of affordable housing, Concord Housing Development Corporation. Come on up. So, uh, background, not on the housing corporation, but as you'll recall, at, um, the last town meeting, uh, we approved essentially four articles associated. I'm sorry?
Did you skip the note?
We did.
I did.
Preservation Plan, Thomas.
Since I've skipped it, I'm going to go ahead with ten, so is that all? I'm sorry. I apologize. The background's, we had four articles which we approved at town meeting. Two were funding articles, one a transfer tax, one a building surcharge. The third was to create a committee that would essentially receive these funds and decide how to disperse them toward our affordable housing goals. And Article twenty-three, or the first one that evening, was an allocation of free cash to, uh, from free cash to be under the control of the town manager, uh, for affordable housing. And so it is, uh, so if I could just ask you to introduce yourselves, and please go ahead.
Jerry Evans, co-chair of Concord Housing Development Corp.
Liz Russ with the Regional Housing Services Office.
And I'm Brenda Cool, the Executive Director for Habitat for Humanity.
And would you please pull that microphone closer to you? Thank you very much. All right, please, Jerry, go ahead.
Okay, and also, also with us is Charles Phillips.
I see Charles back there. Good evening, Charles.
He's in, he's involved in this as well.
Of course.
So, uh.
From the Housing Foundation.
Yes. Uh, so, thank you for pointing out the four, uh, articles at town meeting that passed. It does show that the town has come a long way over the years to supporting affordable housing, and so we always like to mention that we thank the townspeople for doing that type of stuff. The short version is, we were approached a while back for purchasing a home at nine thirty Main Street, which is near Route two and Main Street, last house before you get to the corner. The homeowner would like to see the house be given for a hor, for affordable housing. She wants to sell it, but didn't want to sell it to the general public. We were unable to reach an agreement with her at that point in time. It's come back on the market, and, uh, we have a, um, signed offer for the home. So, what this project has done is, what I think the town had hoped would happen, is that there's a, somewhat a pot of money out there to be used for affordable housing. There is a collaborative effort between many groups to try to see this come to be. We have Habitat for Humanity, Concord Housing Foundation, Concord Housing Development Corp., CPC money, and this other money that's out there. So, it's good, because it's not just representative of CHDC trying to do something standalone, but it is a collaborative effort amongst many groups to do it. So, the plan is, Concord Housing Development Corp. purchases the home. We turn it over to Habitat for Humanity, who is putting money in, but also will become the owner. They will also be doing the general contracting work, permitting work on the property as well. And the rest of us sit back and watch them do their job, and two affordable housing units hopefully will develop from it. Ahead of them, they have to go and find out from the town whether they can be permitted for duplex versus a single-family home. I believe, um, it has been discussed with Marcia, Rasmussen is planning, and, um, I think you all have with you the memo that we sent out, which, without getting into a lot of specifics, does have the breakdown of the money that is needed to be able to have this project go ahead. So actually, I'm going to have Liz go through it, because she is imminently quicker with the numbers, and has dealt with them more than I have, so.
Um, thank you, Jerry. Um, so, there are four funders, um, participating in this, and then also the town, so it is a collaborative effort. The community preservation funds that are, uh, planned to be used in this purchase were appropriated over three town meetings, I think two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and sixteen. It specifically for what's called buy-down, which is essentially the conversion of market-rate homes to affordable homes. So that's something that's come up many times over the years as a desire to preserve existing housing units by, you know, converting them to affordable housing, and the CPC and town meeting voted those funds, and they've been sitting there awaiting an opportunity such as this. So, so that's a great thing. The CPC is very happy that there's an appropriate project for those funds. Um, as Jerry mentioned, Habitat would be putting in some amount, and then they also would be doing the project management as well as overseeing and managing the permitting process and the construction, and then the sale of two units. The units would be permanently restricted under the DHCD LIP program, which you've, you might know, but they would count on Concord's subsidized housing inventory and be restricted as the standard affordable housing ownership units. The Concord Housing Foundation is very interested in partnering and very enthusiastic about the project, and has put in funds for that, as well as the CHDC. So I think those numbers really come out to the CPC at one eighty-six, Habitat at seventy-five, the Housing Foundation at seventy-five, and, um, the town funds, the request is for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then the CHDC at twenty-five thousand dollars. The CHDC is well-positioned, uh, to, to take advantage of the market situation, and that's what they were set up for, to be able to, to purchase the property and not wait for town meeting. The CHDC doesn't have a source of funds in their own account, so they don't have, um, you know, the funds readily available. They have some, uh, private funds, or not private funds, but their own personal funds, and they use that to fund their small grant program, um, which provides health and safety grants for income-eligible households and properties. Um, so that's really their only funded program, as well as their own administrative.
So, the other reason for asking for the large amount, a hundred and fifty from the town, is that, as Liz mentioned, we have a certain amount of CHDC of money that is not earmarked for anything other than our own discretion. So that, the small grants award, purchase of a home, whatever, but it's a limited amount of money. We could go ahead and do the project without the town money, but then we would probably have to sit down at a board meeting and say, what would be the relevance of CHDC at this point? Because we, we won't have any more money left. We'd have to start to figure out where we are, where are we going to raise funds, get money, get donations, do whatever to do a future project. So we are trying to avoid, uh, having to come to that discussion right now by asking for the hundred and fifty from the town. But we don't want to lose the project, so we could go ahead and, could go ahead and do it, but.
So if, what's your contribution of seventy-five, you would be able to continue with your annual small grant program, is that correct?
For a period of time.
For a period of.
The contrib, I think the CHDC is earmarked for twenty-five.
Twenty-five months.
Twenty-five. So the small grant program is budgeted for thirty thousand dollars per year. The Concord Housing Development Corporation has about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the bank. So that's really what the numbers are. So, three years of thirty thousand dollars, that's ninety thousand dollars towards small grants, plus this, plus they have about eight to ten thousand dollars of administrative funds per year.
So this would be the small grant program for this year?
We would still be able, we would still be able to do the small grant program. But we did have other, we have a Plan A and a Plan B. So the Plan A is, hopefully that happens. Plan B is, if it doesn't happen, we'll dip into the remainder of the money, and we'll just have a shorter window of time that we have to come to grips with what we would need to be doing to, uh, still be relevant in the housing situation with our own money.
What are the sources of funding for the CHDC and for the Concord Housing Foundation?
The CHDC has no sources of funding.
So the funds that you have now, where did they come from?
They came from the, uh, a project up on Route two A, which was called the Hollywood Project. It was eight units that were, that were built, a piece of land that was donated, six of which are affordable, two of which were market rate. The market rate, you know, and it's generated cash.
Oh, okay.
So out of that.
And that was, what, what year was that?
Two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
So it's ten, ten-plus years, and there's been no source of funds since then?
Okay.
So that was kind of a one-time.
And the Housing Foundation is.
Charles Phillips, uh, Chair of the Housing, Concord Housing Foundation. Um, our funds are given to us by private individuals as donations, and, uh, we have happened to, uh, have, um, uh, a fair accumulation of funds from, from private, uh, small contributions, uh, which we haven't had to use for a while. So, so this, this is, uh, this is a good use of our money.
Thank you.
Mike, you have a question?
Oh, no, just a comment about Lollie Woods. It was Mr. McBride, Mr. Hurley's project, if I remember.
David Hale and.
David Hale.
Yeah, Jack McBride and David Hale.
Just a second. Okay. Well, thank you. Uh, did you want to make a comment?
No, I'm just thrilled if we can do something in Concord. So we'd like to preserve the house and make it a duplex, preserve the bones of the house. Um, it's got a walkout basement that we think we can turn into a smaller, maybe a two-bedroom. The top would be a three-bedroom, use of the garage, um, is part of the living space as well. So we're very excited to be able to hopefully do a project here in Concord.
And would there be any residential restrictions? I mean, is this a project that would be open to everyone? Or would there be, as we have in other projects, been a Concord preference?
One unit would be eligible for a local preference through the DHCD regulation, so that'd be the same standards.
Okay.
And what would.
Yeah, go ahead.
What would your timeframe be, do you, do you guess, for the, um, redevelopment and?
Uh, so Habitat, uh, the money we're putting in now is to purchase the project.
Right.
We then have to raise the money to, uh, build the homes. Everybody thinks Jimmy Carter gives us the money, but we're all, we're grassroots. So, once we have, um, he doesn't, no, we actually pay to have the name of Habitat. Uh, so, uh, what we will do is, once we get approval, we'll start a project. Um, we're very sensitive to how we raise money. In town, we've already got some interested sponsors. Um, and so normally, we also have some sewer situation that we need to get that straightened out. My best guess would be that this project would probably start, uh, next springtime, because we'd need to, I don't want to start a project unless we have sixty to seventy percent raised, which is normally how we do our projects. We have one other project in front of it. So I think springtime, by the time we get through permitting, is probably a good estimate. It normally takes us seven to nine months to build a home, because it's built with all volunteers. Um, so take us through, maybe we'd be done for the end of next year.
Great.
Best guess.
Glenda.
So, um, I applaud all of you for working together and getting all these pieces worked out. I, it's not easy. Takes a lot of effort, and it usually requires, uh, uh, um, affordable housing often requires piecing together pieces of dollars to support your project. Um, as I recall at town meeting, um, these funds were made available, um, through the town manager and the approval of the select board, which is why I assume you're here today. Um, I, I had a couple questions, and that is, um, what form, what legal, uh, form of agreement will this take? Um, I know that, um, and I'm assuming that this hasn't yet gone before town council, um, and whether or not we need to do that.
So, um, Habitat and the CHDC will sign a land disposition agreement, um, and so that that's been contemplated. So should, um, you favor this project and, and vote to award some funds? We would work through, whether it was a grant agreement, or how, how you would want to, um, condition those funds.
Details could be worked out with the town manager.
The closing is scheduled for July twenty-sixth, which is why, um, this is on your agenda for, for July first. So we would, um, uh, work on that in short order.
Good.
Okay.
Um, I just have one question. So you're taking, taking the existing structure and creating two units without additions or?
No, preliminary, I have, I'm sorry, I have some sketches here. These are very preliminary. We actually use a architect who lives in Concord and does pro bono services. Um, the plan would be to take, there's currently an existing garage, um, to combine the two, so that we can keep that footprint there, and then build out the bottom with a lot of glass, so that we have enough light. Um, but right now, I mean, having done a big analysis of the house, we've looked at it a couple of times, and we think that the structure itself is good bones, so.
Essentially the same footprint?
Right.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
And I think we've, uh, you already asked the question about whether we would have.
Concord preference, right.
A Concord preference, which is important, yeah.
Yeah, good.
So, I, I've just, a question, what would, so if we go ahead and do this, and let, so now you have the money, you buy the house, and you guys are the owners of the house.
Right.
Right. What happens if you can't?
Close.
Do what you want to do?
If you don't raise the money, or?
Yeah, I think we put in the, did we put something in there to turn it back?
Yeah, we did. We have a reversion clause.
I know.
And there's a reversion deed being held in escrow till the completion of the permitting and the completion of the project. So the, um, term sheet outlines the terms of that, which would be then transferred into the land disposition agreement, and had talked through just that same piece, and then the return of the funds.
All right, thank you.
So not unlike, um.
Junction Village.
Junction Village, the town's money would revert to the town.
Yep. Additional comments or questions?
Does the, since Kate has been away since this came in, we need to have her as interim town manager review this as well? Is Kate Hodges, the interim town manager, need to review this as well going forward?
Yeah.
So is this something that, you know, you could continue to the seven, to the seven fifteen meeting? We can timeline with your closing date. I just want to clarify that.
I think, I think what we could do.
Is that what it is?
I don't know what we will do, but what we could do is we could vote to recommend and approve the town manager's allocation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then I would then meet with Kate.
And then, when Kate is back, she can take this up under her discretion as interim town manager.
She's away, and she comes back and.
Rather than, rather than waiting two weeks. I mean, if that's her.
I had a, it, it did happen very quickly. I gave her a heads-up that this might be coming, but didn't want to, uh, go through this until the offer was accepted, which was late last week.
Right, and since it's the second time it's coming up, um, because it came up before in February, and we were preparing to do it then, so she might be somewhat familiar with it anyway.
The difference is there were no town funds at that particular time.
Right, because we hadn't had town meeting.
But the CPC and the Habitat and the Housing Foundation, but there wasn't some due diligence.
Somewhat familiar with it.
Exactly.
And you've met with the CPC, and they're ready to go to.
Yep.
So we're the last voice.
I think it's exactly the kind of project that we were thinking about when we put forward that article, so really happy to see this whole collaboration.
Mr. Banfield, you have to come up.
This is, uh, Dean Banfield, seventy-three Walden Terrace, just, uh, speaking for myself. I'm Chair of the FinCom. Um, I just want some clarification of the line item CPA buy-down funds. Um, the CPA does, has made allocations to the CHDC, um, many times for this kind of project. Are those funds held by CHDC? Where are those funds? If they're CPC control, doesn't that take town meeting to get them out of the CPC accounts?
No.
They're appropriated already through town meeting, being held at the town, um, but available to their purpose. The CPC has voted that this project meets the, uh, the conditions of the grant agreement for those funds, and so, um.
So, they're, they've been pre-voted for no particular project, but can be released at any, I just want to be clear.
That's correct.
That's not the regular CPC process.
No, no, it is the regular CPC. Every, every year, if I may, because I, well, Lynda was on too, but Lynda, correct me if I'm. So, in this Community Preservation Act, ten percent at least has to be spent on the four different areas. One being affordable housing. So, some years, we have lots of affordable housing, some years we have lots of something else. So, if we don't make the whole ten percent in one year, or if we just want to accumulate funds, there is a way to do it through, I don't remember what it's called, like a fund.
Yeah.
We put it into that fund. So, as Liz mentioned, I think it was two thousand thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, we put a little bit in each year, so that it accumulates, so when a big project comes along, we have those funds for these buydowns.
I was also on the CPC, and it was my experience that those funds are town accounts, and those town accounts can be released when the CPC.
Right.
No, but the CPC brings a use for them to town meeting. It's just, you're, you're bypassing, you're bypassing a critical stage here, which is, the town meeting needs to approve these. We bring those project lists annually. It says, "For this address, for this project."
Right.
And the town approves those. Generalized funds can, there's, I don't know, they're in town accounts, and my understanding, those are town accounts. I don't know how they get released without having a town meeting process.
So, Dean, I'll just comment that these funds have already been approved by CPC and the town meeting for the, for this very purpose.
Right.
When funds are set aside in reserve accounts for CPC, such as housing, then, you're right. They have to be, the project has to be rediscussed at CPC meeting and brought to town meeting for approval. So, there's two different situations here.
Okay, so, we have account, town accounts that can be released, that are under the control of the CPC, and can be released literally at any time on their approval. This is, it's new, it's new to me.
If the, if the funds meet the terms of the grant agreement for the article that was approved at town meeting. So, the article went to town meeting for its purpose, and then there's a grant agreement that the CPC sent to the Concord Housing Development Corporation, which identified the allowed purposes for those funds at that annual town article.
It's new to me, and, and I.
Good question.
Good question.
It's really, okay.
We can have Heather Gill send you, if you want, the detail of it.
All right, so, are we ready for, are there any other questions or comments? Lynda, can you craft a motion for us?
Try.
You can try.
Move to recommend and approve the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from town funds that were allocated at the two thousand nineteen town meeting for the purposes of affordable housing, for the, the project that's before us, that is combining efforts from Habitat, CPA, CHDC funds, Concord Housing Foundation, and the town funds.
And the project is located at three nine, nine thirty Main Street?
Correct.
Second.
Before there's a second, I think we need to, I think we're recommending and approving the town managers.
Sorry if I left that out. I meant to say that, if I left that out.
Okay, so, we're not, we're recommending the town manager do this, all right? So, is there a second to that amended motion? Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. This sounds like a great project.
Thank you guys very much, appreciate it.
All the best.
And now, with apologies again, this is a preservation plan, Thomas Mott Shaw Estate, three seventeen Garfield Road. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Dan Bailey. I'm an attorney at the Boston firm of Pierce Atwood LLP. I'm here representing Joyce Lawrence as the owner of three seventeen Garfield Road. What you have before you tonight is a request to sign a historic preservation plan. And just, I'll, I'll try to sort of short circuit the history, but there is a little bit of it, so bear with me. Mrs. Lawrence's property at three seventeen Garfield Road has two houses on it that are National Register houses. Mrs. Lawrence made the arrangements to get those listed back in the nineteen eighties. She would like to subdivide the properties for purposes of the, the two residences, for purposes of selling those residences separately. Under the zoning bylaw, there is a provision that allows you to reduce the lot size and frontage of a lot if the purpose of, it's a special permit requirement, if the purpose of the special permit is to preserve, preserve historic properties. So, a little over a year ago, we started with the Historic Commission. We went in and said, "We could subdivide this lot." There's two, two parcels. One is the main estate lot, and I've got a picture if you want to see it. But, you know, very large house, was done by Thomas Mott Shaw, who's an esteemed architect. And then there's a carriage house. It's, it's literally on the opposite side of what's a, a private road. So, the idea is to carve that one off, even though a little piece of it extends across the road for the septic system, all of those details. Historic Commission supported it. We then went to the planning board. Planning board supported it. Went, then went to the zoning board of appeals, and they unanimously voted a special permit. There are a number of conditions to that special permit. The line, we've satisfied all of them. You know, I had to put in a separate septic system, had to make sure the utilities were separate. The last item is for the Board of Selectmen to execute the preservation plan. That preservation plan was executed last week by the Historic Commission. So, you know, what does the preservation plan do? It preserves the properties in perpetuity in the historic condition. A lot of people don't understand that listing on the National Register provides no protection whatsoever to a historic property. And indeed, as the property has been marketed for sale, much of the interest has been to, you know, it's eight acres to tear down the historic properties, which is not what Mrs. Lawrence wants to see happen. So, we've been working at this for, actually for a couple of years, working with town staff and, and with the other boards. And, you know, we're, you know, she's actually very excited about the notion that these properties will be preserved in the historic state forever.
Terrific. Are there questions or comments you want to make?
I just want to comment that I was at the ZBA meeting the other night, and they clarified that this was a historic preservation plan as opposed to a historic preservation restriction.
Yes.
And the paperwork that we received has not caught up with that information. So, I just want to make sure that the documents that need to be signed, which include the state, are, that particular item is removed from the documents that we have to sign, just to catch up with the ZBA ruling.
Can I ask, what is the difference between the historic preservation plan and a historic preservation restriction?
The restriction requires, do you want to speak to that?
Go right ahead. I think you're.
My understanding is that the restriction requires a state review and approval.
Oh, yeah.
And that was not the intent here?
Okay.
Yeah, and, and just to take that a half a step further, we, we did provide the draft to the state, and we got back something that was going to be difficult to work through. So, we came back to the, the boards and asked to have it amended from a restriction to a plan. And town council and I have been going around in circles about, you know, the best way to do this. And, and everybody agreed that this is the best route, because it is a special permit. So, the, you know, through the zoning special permit, the conditions become permanent.
All right.
I have a question. I, I was at the Historical Commission meeting when this was discussed, and I, there was one item, number nineteen, about.
It's true, the indemnity.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the, the Historic Commission said, "We'll leave the indemnification provisions for the Board of Selectmen." I mean, I, as currently drafted, I mean, I think at one point I had raised some concern about it, but in revisiting it, I'm looking at it, and I'm saying, "It's, it's okay."
I, I guess I'm a little confused. It seems to me that this indemnification would be a town council type issue, and is, did town, did our town council draft this wording, and you originally had a problem, and then you?
I believe that's correct, but I don't want to, I, I believe that what I had said, but it's indemnification, it indemnifies the town for anything arising out of it in connection with grant or my client's failure to comply with the terms and provisions of this restriction. I said, "Well, that's a little broad. What it should say is for the town's exercise of its rights under this restriction, as opposed to anything that comes out of this restriction." But, we're trying to get this done. So.
Andrew, do you know if Mina is waiting on this?
I believe Jillian with Anderson Krieger, Jillian Barker was the one who was working on it.
It was Jillian, yes.
Heather Gill's memo notes that Jillian and Mr. Bailey had worked on this. But that's as far as I know, that it was really left to the board to decide that last piece. So, Heather's historic preservation plan that we have, the plan was highlighted, because that was waiting for the ZBA approval, so the board wants to look at a final, 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 next meeting. We can confirm that with Jillian, if that's acceptable to the applicant as well, just to clarify.
Or maybe we can vote it, subject to council, you know, agreeing to the language in number nineteen. And then, we only have to come back if, if town council changes the language in number nineteen.
You, you note a time constraint, like, is there a?
Well, I'm, we're, um, yes, we're, we're really trying to, to move this along. And I, I like Ms. Ackerman's suggestion, which is to vote it, subject to approval by town council. I wear town council hat in another town, so I'm familiar with that approach.
Word the motion, so that it's, any changes deemed substantial by the chair shall come back to the board at the next meeting.
Then I can talk to council and.
Yeah, you can confirm that. That will be the easiest way to.
That's, that's fine with me. Any other comments or questions? All right, can we, do you like to try a motion for this?
Okay, I'll try. Move to accept the preservation plan for Thomas Mott Shaw Estate located at three seventeen Garfield Road, with the provision that town council approves the wording for item number nineteen.
Any changes substantial.
And in these changes, yeah. Good.
All right.
Second.
Is that all right with everybody? All right, are we ready? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Sorry to have kept you.
It's still an early night.
For you, perhaps. All right, so, the next three items, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, all have to do with long-range plan. And just as a way of setting this up, item twelve is an update. And all the update is that we've been trying to get our arms around various aspects of the long-range plan. And the, the two that we're going to talk about this evening is an ongoing discussion about the capital planning process that we talked about last time. And then when we concluded with that, we'll begin our discussion on economic vitality. So, on the capital planning one, I'll turn it over to Ms. Ackerman.
Well, we received a number of comments, and I want to thank everybody who submitted comments. We don't have, right now, one draft that has all the comments. I think partly, there were scheduling issues, including my schedule, and partly, I really wanted to get a sense from the board members what you thought of these comments, because they don't all agree with each other, you know, so.
We received comments from the school committee today, and they're all.
Oh, right.
Are they in our?
Right, so the school committee is the one with the green.
Okay.
And we also, Lynda made comments. Jane, your, your comments and mine ended up on the red, the one with that's red. And we also have comments from Dory Keough, and that's pretty much it. We have the MMA fiscal policy recommendation and the February letter from the Finance Committee, but those we've seen before. So, I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, how you want to.
Well, perhaps you could, we've seen draft of your charge before, so perhaps you could quickly characterize the nature of the kind of comments that you've received. And if you teed one of them up, maybe we could.
Okay, so if we look at the red one, pretty much there is an agreement that we're going to take out this whole section about a team and just call it a committee. There is one comment on that from Dory Keough that possibly the Select Board or Finance Committee would propose a bylaw change in town meeting, twenty twenty, enabling Finance Committee to be able to vote on these type of committees. I mean, this is a financial type committee, so, you know, but I don't want to get off the track. That's sort of a side issue. So, then, several people, one person wanted a five-year capital plan, and one person wanted a ten-year. What do, what do members feel about that?
Well, the town, with that comment, the town already does, and so does the school, I think, a five-year capital plan.
Right.
I thought the intent, at the beginning of the session, was to extend the life of this, so.
Aren't we trying to match the long-range plan, which is a ten-year?
So, I think the, I think the notion of extending beyond, I mean, once you get it going, it's a, you know, it's a rolling.
Right.
Kind of thing, but I think the idea originally was, let's look out a little bit further in the future than we have.
I mean, basically, what you're doing anyway is updating it every year.
Yeah, once you get it done.
And we know years eight, nine, and ten are going to change, we know, you know. Okay, so, the next part I put in there, I mean, on the red version, it seems like there's a lot of confusion about the capital process of now. So, I think that the town staff and the school committee and school staff are not confused, but I think a lot of the public might be confused. So, I added in this clarification in red here, in the Purpose and Background section. And it says, "The current capital planning in Concord is conducted in three distinct funding layers. Minor capital items are funded within the operating town and CPS budgets as recommended by the town manager and school superintendent." You know, those are things like police cruisers, minor things that are already in the operating budget. Then there's an intermediate and large capital expenditures for town and CPS, generally funded within the levy limit via an annual capital plan article at town meeting as recommended by the town manager. Right? And, but, and we've done really good planning in those two layers. I think what I really want to address is this last layer. Very large projects are each funded in distinct articles of town meeting, and that you'd say usually approved as debt exclusions to Proposition Two and a Half. So, what I think we really need to do is look at these very large projects. This is what the main concern is going forward. The middle school, the, the town projects were over a hundred million total, et cetera, et cetera. So, I thought it would be helpful to put in that section there and write explaining about that. And then, what says, "One task of the Capital Planning Committee will be to determine the scope of the capital plan. Which of the above three layers are going to be included?" So, that's something we should decide. I mean, does this capital committee need to get involved in cruisers and everything? Maybe not. Maybe they're only looking. need to get involved in cruisers and everything? Maybe not. Maybe they're only looking at the biggest layer. Maybe they're looking at the middle layer and the biggest layer.
Well, this is a committee that is reviewing and making recommendations, is actually not making decisions.
Correct.
So.
Town meeting is going to make the final decisions.
And in the two, one and two, we're talking about items that are within the purview of other operating units of the town. In other words.
Number one is.
Well, but, okay.
Number two, that's interesting. Maybe, maybe, yeah.
Number two is part of the annual capital plan.
Right, right.
So in other words, I don't want to, I'm not, I don't think our intent is to step beyond.
Right.
I think the intent of this was to look at large.
Right.
Facility planning.
Right.
Or like the middle school, like the new whatever we're going to do.
Right.
For the town. I think we ought to keep ourselves focused on that. Because remember, it was, when this was first being discussed, I think with the finance committee, it was their interest in this was so that they could look more broadly at tax impacts and think about sequencing or scheduling so that we kind of kept our, you know, if we were going to take a tax, that the question was, when were we going to hit it? How big was it going to be?
Right.
What could we move? That kind of stuff.
Right. The only devil's advocate I would put forth about the intermediate layer is we've gotten some comments about that maintenance and operating costs be considered. And there are a lot of maintenance items in that intermediate layer. That's mostly what it's about, right? Replacing roofs, spoilers. So we're definitely not going to be concerned with the first layer, the minor cruisers and stuff.
Those things come to the town, those things, first the operating budget comes to the town annually, and in that is number one.
Yes.
There's also a capital article everywhere.
Yes.
That's number two.
Correct.
The ones we are really talking about are the separate.
Number three.
Items having to do with facilities essentially.
So I think what I hear Terry saying is, if we're going to count them, you know, if a decision to, let's say, replace the town, to create a town campus was moved forward, and some of the considerations for that decision were the state of the septic, this, all of the, and of course, but I'm saying, I don't think that changes the ordering. And I don't think it changes the purpose of this committee. Counting those reasons, looking at that from an economic of the reasons for a large project absolutely makes sense. But I don't think you, I don't know that we're babysitting.
You're saying, once it's, once a new police station is funded, later maintenance will come through in that intermediate layer, but this committee doesn't have to deal with that. Okay, got it.
I don't agree with that. If it's a new facility project, the capital plan should address.
Right.
The ongoing maintenance expenses associated with that capital project. What they shouldn't do is on an annual basis be looking at maintenance of existing facilities.
Right, yeah. Right. So they're only addressing it when we're first building it and we're deciding whether to build it.
But it should be called out.
Correct.
Because often, sometimes we don't think about it.
Absolutely, right, right.
So it's not that the differentiation isn't projects that require debt exclusions, because there are a number of them every year, like the.
Ring Road or.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, good. So instead of it saying, "One task of the committee will be to determine the scope," I think we've just determined the scope. It's going to be only the very large projects, that third layer.
But calling out maintenance.
Right, exactly. And then we have a section about who should be on the committee. Okay, so some people added two, one or two citizens at large, preferably with relevant experience such as financial planning, tax relief, et cetera. Someone else added director of town planning and land management. And the school committee would like to have not necessarily the superintendent and director of finance, but might be their designee. So those were the comments we got on that section.
Well, I think the school should be able to pick whoever they want.
Yeah. If the superintendent has an overload, then trust her to make the decision.
I think it's a good idea to get our planning people involved in this.
So maybe all these people, like the town manager, maybe will have a designee. Maybe, I mean, maybe.
Save for the planning director as well, or the designee as well.
That might not be warranted.
Right. Okay, so they'll all be designated, okay?
And without question, there should be citizens at large.
Right. And right now, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, eight, nine. So we have eight people plus the citizens at large. Do you want to have three, two, we should have an odd number, so do you want to have threes?
One is too few.
Right.
One citizen at large is too few.
Yeah.
So it would either be one or three. So it looks like we're at three.
Okay. And you like this language, preferably with relevant experience such as financial planning, tax relief, et cetera? Should there be something like that in there?
I, I think that we've identified a lot of skills already. And if we're saying citizens at large.
They should be at large.
They should be at large.
We shouldn't put too many restrictions on it. I mean, we can always review what we've got on the committee, and if there's a skill or it's missing, we can.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, that's basically the red ones. And Linda, do you want to add some more from?
Well, I anticipated the layer by injecting the word facilities in a number of places. Facility, Concord Capital Facilities Planning Team, and I was just to indicate that.
This is about facilities, right.
Yeah, the larger facilities. But can I, I'm just, I'm not sure that's exactly right. When you say facilities, are you talking about only buildings? What if it's the pedestrian bridge over the Assabert River or something like that? That seems like part of a possible, a big capital item that we might have. Well, my point was to try to elevate it to that, that tier of larger projects. So there may be a better way to do that.
Well, I think you can, I think you can elevate it to, by the language, as opposed to the title.
Sure, sure.
I think I would want to include something like the bridge.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
You know, that's something, stuff that would not be in the town budget, the school budget, something would not be in the five-year capital plan. Those are the things we want to do.
And that bridge might end up in the five-year capital plan, but it might come out in the largest layer. I don't know where it's going to come out.
So then I think the other concept I tried to inject here was under duties and responsibilities that capital, whatever we call it, the capital plan, will identify a process for the evaluation, timing, and prioritization of projects, taking into account the current and existing town and school master capital facility plans and reports. I just thought that was missing.
That's excellent, yeah.
And then I went under, still sticking with duties and responsibilities. I just suggested, I think you already had prioritized projects, and I just put according to demonstrable and evaluated need, cost benefit, cost avoidance, and environmental resilience. Let me, let me just stay with the concepts here. Projects to include estimated capital operating costs with inflation factor considerations.
Right.
For construction.
Yep.
Et cetera.
That's great.
Yep. And this may warrant some discussion. Assume new construction consistent with sustainability definitions for cost estimates. And the sustainability definitions I'm referring to are similar to the amendment that we just.
Building, yeah. No, I think if we don't put it in there, somebody's going to.
Raise it.
Warrant amendment, put it in. Town has announced its intent to do that.
And I think those are the, you know, a few words here and there, but I think those are the major concepts.
So we don't have a copy of that, right?
You do.
You do.
You do. This, you can borrow mine.
It's a blue.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just, I wasn't identifying the differences.
Okay, so let's see, the school committee, okay, they picked a, well, maybe Wally would like to, I could try to read through what Wally has, or maybe he should come up and so.
Do you want to come up, Wally?
Wally Johnston, 1479 Main Street, Chair of the Concord Carolina Regional School Committee and a member of the Concord School Committee. And by designation from the Chair of the Concord School Committee, I'm here to speak on behalf of what we've sent to you, which we discussed at a meeting a week ago today. So is there something specific on here that you're referring to that you would like?
Well, I'll just note, maybe save a little time. There are a number of language suggestions, which I thought were pretty appropriate, and so toning kind of languages, if you will, not substantive ones, but really, I thought those were, you know, recommend and shall as opposed to, you know, will and do this and do that, which is pretty typical of the way we talk to each other. So I think that's.
Right. And I think the general idea was that, you know, if you, if you kind of come down through this problem, just looking quickly to see where the first perspective that might be, hold on.
I think the first place where there's maybe two different opinions is whether this committee will compile the information or also try to compile it and make some kind of a prioritization and timing recommendation to town meeting. That's where I think a lot of the language is, and we're going to go this way or that way on that.
And so, you know, I would say that's fairly substantive.
Right.
Difference that we noted from the draft language to what we felt comfortable with. The school committee is charged with maintaining the buildings in a way commensurate with the need to deliver program to the students. The only reason we put five years in here versus, say, a 10-year plan, which we'd be happy to do, is that we already compile a lot of information on a five-year basis, rolling basis, that we utilize primarily for what you were just talking about, the middle bullet point, which for the most part are maintenance type issues.
Right.
And as we know, maintenance issues don't go away. So it's, you know, we prioritize them in one given year to the next. And, you know, what we prioritize is a next year issue may very well get superseded by something that happens during the course of the year. So it's a, it's a, it's a moving document that I suspect the town has the same issue, probably to a greater degree, given the diversity of facilities. The, the idea of this committee taking, sort of asking for information from the schools and from town departments about what the needs may be going forward, and what those look like, what is the anticipated cost, what level of detail has been done in the process of creating those assessments, would be provided to this committee, who would then pull all of that information together. We had a little trouble with the word prioritize. We believe town meeting's the legislative body, and ultimately, town meeting will prioritize the projects that it receives from various bodies within the community. Doesn't mean that we, we are perverse to having conversations about, you know, where these things fit in the, in the mix of long-term funding. And, but I don't know that, you know, this, I know for, from the school committee's perspective, the school committee member on this committee is not being sent to it with a notion that you will work with this group of people to prioritize the things that we as the school committee would bring to the select board in the form of a warrant article based on needs we, we assess for the schools. So we have a, we have a process for that now. And I think it works pretty well. So I.
I want to step into agree with Wally on this. I don't, my intent in sort of getting this going here was that this committee would be the committee, I've got a point of view even about that, which I'll come to later, but this committee gets information from the town and gets information from the school committee and pushes back on them if they're not getting the kind of detailed information they need so that they can compile for the town and lay it out. I don't envision them being responsible for taking a project that the school committee says is going to supposed to happen in 2029, say, oh, I think we can do that. But to lay it all out, for everybody to see that we've got this glomming up of stuff happening in some particular year, and engage the conversation, is there a way for us to smooth this so it doesn't impact on the taxpayer as dramatically as it might if it all came in one year? The school committee has its responsibility, select board, and the town has its. I don't think we want to pass off these responsibilities. We want somebody to help get this organized so we can look at it in more depth and with a little bit more comprehensive lens. So.
Right. We're creating a timeline for the, the needs that we've identified.
A timeline and in some cases, more detailed information about projects and pushing on the town or the schools to say, well, it's very interesting, but we need a little bit more here to know about this. So.
Right. I think we're pretty much in agreement on that. I wouldn't want to create a committee that just made more work for the school committee and more work for the town and said, we need you to fill out all these forms, and then they just put it in a big spreadsheet. Because that's maybe just making a lot of make-work.
Yep.
But the part about smoothing and creating the timeline, this is maybe where we have, it's very tricky because there's going to be some, I don't know what other word to use other than prioritizing, there's some way, some recommendation being made about how to smooth that timeline.
I think that's fine, that, but I think that's the school committee and the select board's job.
That's not, we're not offering that to the committee.
When this thing gets presented and you see that there's a problem, we've got to sit down with the school committee and figure out how to solve it. Maybe it's not even a school committee. Maybe it's just a glomming of town stuff.
Right, okay.
And then we have to figure it out. But I think what this hopefully will do is point out the issues.
All right.
And create an opportunity for us to meet with our friends in the schools and get it figured out for the town. And that's why on this committee, we want somebody from the finance committee on there too, because we want them to be able to weigh in with us and make sure they can look at it with their lens on.
I would also offer that in the process, there's a lot of other information we're going to gather that could feed either the town's understanding of, you know, i.e., I'm looking specifically at alternative funding sources. I mean, these are things that individually sometimes, you know, they can get. I mean, these are things that individually, sometimes, you know, they can get lost, but if the schools have gotten in-depth on something, it might inform the town of a path. Or maybe there's a packaging. It gives us opportunities.
So I'm very sensitive to the time tonight. We have another large agenda item, so please go ahead. But then, were there other substantive--
I think there were a couple I'd like to point out. One was, the, there would be one member, who would be a Concord School Committee member. Here, as a Concord School Committee member, primarily with the notion that they could report back to the regional committee, we can't really enjoin the regional committee to this committee without having Carlisle's input and agreement, which could be something that we decide is necessary down the road, or, you know, we, as the regional committee, provide this information every year.
I think the hope is that the regional district would, as they did with the Financial Audit Advisory Committee, decide to participate.
Yes. And I think, as we did with the Financial Audit Advisory Committee, it was formed underway--
Yep.
--and then we, we folded the region into that. I think we'd be, I don't think it would be quite as formal as that, need to be quite as formal as that, as far as gathering the information goes. But I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not putting a regional committee member on here. And of course, we did mention choosing the representative just based on, there's a lot of moving parts right now. We did the same thing with the building committee, with the facilities director versus the--
Right, so Terry, do you, you've heard from a lot of folks and a lot of--
I think I have enough to write a next draft. I, yeah, maybe, I think we're getting closer.
Okay, well, let's, let's get that, and if you get a draft on, I think you can circulate it--
Right.
--and circulate it to schools too, and to the finance committee, so they have a chance to see it before, before we get here. And let's see if we can get this wrapped up--
Okay.
--or close to wrapped up at our next meeting. That would be really helpful.
Okay.
So thanks, Wally. Thank you, Terry, for all the work you've done on that.
Thanks for all the work.
Thanks for everybody's comments.
Next, town-wide economic vitality discussion. So just as a, sorry, we're running a little late, but this is a very important discussion for the town. We had a lot of correspondence on it, that's great. And we have folks here tonight that are, I hope, gonna, gonna speak to this. What we're intending to do is, we've defined economic vitality as having a lot of components. A traditional economic development component, a tourism visitor component, and a retail sustainability component. I don't know what exactly to say, but--
We have six members of Concorde Business Partnership here.
Great.
Who are very interested in this subject. They wonder if we can line it up at the end--
When I'm finished, you can do anything you want. Yeah, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we put the framework around this. So sustainability, the retail environment, tourism, and then traditional economic, economic development. Before we do what Mr. Dana suggested, I had asked the Superintendent of the National Park, Mr. Dunn, who is here, so I'm gonna start with him, and he obviously has to do with a component of that, which has to do with tourism. So BJ, come, come on up.
Great, this is on?
I hope so.
Yeah, great, and thank you. So I was just making some notes in the back--
You need to introduce yourself and tell us where you live.
Sure.
We know who you are.
Okay, BJ Dunn, and I'm a resident of Concord on Monument Street and Superintendent of the National Park.
Thank you.
I thought this was a discussion, so I was just doing various bullet points here in no particular order. The park is a major economic driver for, in the tourism realm, for not just the town of Concord, but really the region and the state. I was just pulled out before I came to the meeting, the updated economic data that comes out from a social science office for each national park. So I can report that our economic impact to the local area is $59.9 million, which is, that's 2018 data. That's up from 2017. Interestingly, the job impact went down a little bit, so I'm not quite sure how that worked, but they report approximately 790 jobs within the local area that are a result of the existence of the park. And the overall totality of the economic impact in the range of $85.8 million. So that's when you start to look at the multiplying impacts. I guess my bullets are really kind of random and in no particular order, but I think are things of interest to the select board and to the community around this topic. I've been studying, and I may have previously reported, and I've been here before, the visitation trends for the park. So the park was established officially in 1959. We have our 60th birthday this September, but the visitation for the park has been steadily growing over all of these years. And what's really interesting is a couple of specific spikes. And one of those was during the bicentennial, where the visitation to the park was averaging 400,000, 500,000 visitors a year. And at the time of the bicentennial, the visitation spiked up 440,000 visitors. And the interesting thing is that the, it didn't just spike up and then drop way back down, but that's when the visitation of this park then began to hover around 900,000, give or take. It spiked significantly up and stayed up, which again connects back into the economic vitality related to the economics that I was just reporting. And that happened again in the year 2000. That was the year the Battle Road Trail opened up, it was obviously the 225th anniversary. And the visitation of the park spiked up 140,000 visitors. And once again, that spike up in visitation stayed up. So what we're, and what I spend a fair amount of my time thinking about is the upcoming anniversary of 2025, which will be the 250th anniversary of these events that took place in 1775. And my suspicion with some of the larger planning efforts of a nationally-designated commission that is working on a report to Congress and the President for the end of the year. Within the state, we have a REV 250 Working Group. I know there is a bill at both the State House and Senate to form a commission within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So all of these things that are circulating or being worked on in discussions, I'm just spending a lot of time planning, that we're probably likely to have another significant spike in visitation at the park in the very near future, in 2025. And I think that relates to this discussion and planning efforts. So I spend a lot of my time thinking about parking. Parking is a challenge, not all of the time, but seasonally, particularly around Patriot's Day events, which happen over a course of a couple of weeks, fall foliage. So we're, we're often challenged with every single parking lot at the park. It's hard to think about expanding those parking lots in a, in an easy manner. So working on efforts with Marsha Rasmussen in the Planning Department here. Local example is we jointly submitted an application for a feasibility study of a shuttle bus system. This is, this is funding that would come through the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highways, and it would fund a feasibility study for a pilot shuttle bus system that would connect the train station depots to the park, but not just to the park, but other tourist destinations in the town, as well as downtown Concord Center.
Is this crosstown connect? Is that what you're referring to?
This is not crosstown connect. This would be, this would be a feasibility study to explore the concept of a pilot shuttle system. So yet to be defined.
And unlike crosstown, I mean, this, this is a federally designated piece.
These, these--
Funds would be federally designated.
These funds would be coming through Federal Highway. It's actually, the acronym is FLAP, which stands for Federal Lands Access Program. And so this is where they are trying to use federal dollars to connect visitors to federal lands. And here in Concord, we have just not the National Park, but we also have Grape Meadows, the Wildlife Refuge. So the Wildlife Refuge parking lot would be one of the shuttle stops if this ever came into existence. But the concept that Marsha and I have talked about, and again, the feasibility study would explore this, and this would be the first phase, is whether a shuttle bus system such as this, it may not be a bus, it may be a smaller shuttle vehicle instead of a full-blown bus, but whether it could be designed to help tourists coming by public transportation during the daytime tourist hours, but maybe during commute hours. It could be designed to be used multipurpose. So maybe it's bringing employees from a remote parking lot to the downtown center to allow employees to park a little further away, freeing up the critical downtown parking spaces for visitors coming into Concord who are driving.
And, and the study has that kind of flexibility built into it.
It's a, the feasibility study would be very broad. This is not, just to clarify, this is not yet funded. Actually, Marsha's office emailed me today, asking if we've heard whether this is funded, and it's just for a feasibility study to explore this.
And what's the timeframe when we might find out?
We should be finding out about the funding for the feasibility study within the next month or so, is my understanding. The funds wouldn't actually come into the town probably until sometime, some point next year. And the concept would be, assuming the feasibility study recommended this was worthy, we would apply for a subsequent grant to actually implement the pilot system, and that might be a phased, like, four-year pilot to explore if it is actually economically viable and would sustain itself.
And this would be a perfect overlap between transportation and economic vitality, which is one of the--
And when you say next year, which, are we got a calendar year, a federal fiscal year, a state fiscal year?
That would be, I would define that as next calendar year.
Calendar year, 2020, okay.
So the, so I think we're all relatively familiar with the park, because it's so much a part of what we do here and the visitation. And sort of the question that I think overlays this for everybody that's here tonight is what can we do as a select board to help advance this notion of economic vitality? So specifically to you, BJ, what are the, and you don't need to have a direct answer now, but what are, what are the things the town could do, and the select board in particular do, to enhance the visitor activity and experience at the National Park that would also then be a benefit to the, to the town? I don't know what the statistic is, but what percentage of your visitors come to downtown Concord?
I don't know.
Don't know.
Right.
But my suspicion is not an overwhelming percentage. Because there's a lot of buses and a lot of cars that go from here to the Battle Road Visitor Center and then off to some other interesting place to visit. So for me, I think cooperative arrangements, like the one you've talked about with Marsha, that can enhance your visitor's experience and can also address some of the issues here, I think are terrific.
Right, such a--
Can I comment on that?
You can, but you have to come up here to comment. We can't comment from the--
I should comment on Jane O'Baggy, Concorde Chamber of Commerce. One of the issues that I think impacts vitality is the walkability of the area. And it's, I'm a walker, so I can say this with some degree of confidence. It's not the best walk from the National Park to downtown Concord Center.
Right.
The walkways aren't particularly, well, maintained. And that's true in a lot of different areas of Concord, from the bus station to Concord Center. It's not the nicest walk. I get that, I get the calls many, many times about, can I take the train to Concord, West Concord or Concord Center, and can I walk to downtown or can I walk to West Concord? And I said, you can, but--
But.
But there aren't walkways. So I think that the walkways throughout Concord could help improve the access to the National Park and to other areas within Concord. I mean, the train station and West Concord, the same thing. I know there's been a lot of talk about it, and we talked to the Department of Public Works, but that area from the train station to Deborah's, personally, I think is dangerous to walk.
Yep.
It is, it's not a safe crossing.
One of the letters we received from, I think, Mr. Rasmussen, specifically called out walkability. So I think that, that's the kind of thing we're hoping to hear from folks this evening, is to tee up, you've teed up one for us already, transportation, which is a part of our long-range plan that we really don't have quite the handle on.
No, but we're starting to pull it together.
We're starting to pull it together, and of course, what you just mentioned would be a terrific thing if they grant--
Yeah, what we're missing for is exactly those kind of opportunities in front of us, which you've just nicely dropped.
So, and then teeing up walk, walkability.
And the walkability appears to be connected to the long-range plan, which, if I recall, wants zero net emissions and really a reduction of car traffic and vehicular traffic in the city, in the town. So that's fine, but you need walkways to be able to get to this.
Walkability and bicycle-friendly to--
So BJ, I don't want to keep you any longer, but to the extent that you have ideas that could enhance your visitor's experience and also enhance the visitation to the town, if you could let us know. So our, our hope is that we can gather up all of these suggestions and then try to get something put together so that we could move forward on, on them, to the extent that they're before us. So greatly appreciated if you were willing to help us out.
Yeah, no, I, do you want me to mention any of these others?
Sure.
I know there are others that want to speak.
There are others, there are. Please, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, on a similar note to walkability, but I'll just mention bike share. So since I arrived in town, just my strategy was to actually, because the park, again, is across all three towns, and I quickly picked up that all three towns were working on bike share. So the meetings that I was participating in was encouraging, utilize the same bike share service. And so that we could actually get the bike share stations eventually into the parking lots of both visitor centers. Bikes, of course, are on the Battle Road Trail, but to allow much greater interconnectivity and thus the success of that. I'll mention, a goal of the park is to figure out how to get the Barrett's Farm unit, which is the newest unit of the park, open to the public. This, of course, was the original destination of the British coming to Concord, not the North Bridge itself. The park, I just recently learned, we are formulated for funding, and this is where the town can help. We will have public comment periods and opportunities for town and, and public input. We have received funding to initiate a development concept plan. So it'll be a two-year phased planning process where the National Park Service will assess the existing conditions at the site, begin to look at, if we were to have it open, how parking would work, the pedestrian flow, do we need to create parking there for visitors? Or do we bring visitors from the visitor center on a shuttle system over there so we can reduce the amount of parking that might be needed at the unit? I don't know what the answers are. This is a planning process that would look at various options like that. And input from the town and the public would be-- will be needed. And that, again, ties into the larger economic vitality of the town. And that, again, ties into the larger economic vitality of the town. The last thing that I will mention is the park from direction from the Washington office. We are fully implementing CUAs, commercial use authorizations for the road-based tour operators, which are the buses. Just to clarify that not every bus is the actual tour operator. Sometimes the tour operator companies are just chartering and renting the bus. So this is directed towards the tour, commercial tour operators. But this would establish an annual fee to the park and a per-person charge that would come to the park. The park would retain 100% of these fees towards park operations, which is desperately needed, not to comment in detail on the park budget situation. But in turn, I think in a way that this may help the park, and I was thinking about this sitting in the back, is before, we had no idea who, what buses were coming to the town. There was no way to communicate with them, you know? And now we're going to know within a year or so, who are these buses that are coming? And I think that allows for opportunities to then provide the tour operators additional information, such as the town of, if you can't find a bus parking spot in our lot because there are too many buses there, the town of Concord just created two bus parking spaces behind the town visitor center. And it allows us to begin to promote some other opportunities for these buses to maybe drive them back, no pun intended, into town center.
Right.
So I'll end there because I-
Well, thank you very much. Those are some great suggestions. And I think, you know, continuing to work together, we can do some things that would benefit both the town and the National Park.
And that would be great.
So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mike, can I just make a couple of very quick comments? The bike share that you're talking about, I was at a meeting, I believe it was the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, and I think they've heard you, and they are going to try and all coordinate with the same.
Yeah.
And the other comment is this feasibility study, the U.S. Department of Transportation grant that you've applied to. We've also applied, I've heard from Elizabeth Hughes for, I think, $190,000 for a crosstown connect grant, which would come from the state, and with the same type of shuttle concept. So what I'm wondering is, at some point, not tonight, but, you know, if we need matching funds or we need to coordinate, or, you know, I'm sure the planning department is totally on top of it, but just, I'm not. So just in case, just, yeah.
Thank you very much, BJ. I really appreciate it. Mr. Dane indicated there are folks here from the partnership. I recognize a few folks, so. Come on up, pull up a chair and make yourself at home. Get the chamber, Mr. Montague, come on up, Mr. Verrell. Maybe we could try very hard to get everybody right around the table here so we can-
There we go.
You're in charge of that, Mr. Montague. We'll make you the official rickshaw. So just by way of introduction, not of the business partnership, Mr. Montague, the Chamber of Commerce, but essentially what we're trying to do is, what I said to Mr. Dunn, what are the kinds of things the town should be doing that could help either tourism and visitation, or retail sustainability, or large-scale economic development, which I suspect we're not really going to talk much about tonight, so.
I have, Mr. Montague, I have more than street in Concord. I have some studying, I made up some brochures that I'd like to pass out. We say in facts.
Some facts?
Facts.
Pass them out. I suspect this is going to have to do with parking.
Doing that, the business partnership had a meeting back in December in which Chris Whalen and Elizabeth Hughes attended. And at that meeting, we heard from economic development, people who have been hired by four other towns. The one from Lexington, one from Hudson, one from Brookline, one from Bedford. And I don't know if you were there at that meeting, or maybe-
I think I was.
And the presentations were very, very impressive. These four people who, in a way you might say were competitive with each other in their promotion of their communities, were extremely collegial about their approach to this issue. And they all really pretty much had the same message. And that is that it really makes a big difference to have people in the town who are employed by the town and who have access at a high level of administration to facilitate, to facilitate the economic health of the town rather than to regulate the behavior of people. And we have, and if you do that, you are not so much dependent on the random occurrence of people who just stumble into town and say, I'm looking for a place to rent. And then you go through a permitting process with whoever it is who wants to do it. And what the mission statement for the Lexington job description, I think, said it very well, although I know there are many important differences between Lexington and Concord. But the mission statement in part was to act as an ombudsman to help developers and landlords navigate and expedite permitting and zoning issues, may recruit and assist prospective businesses in locating and maintaining their business operations in town, advise retail and small businesses on strategies to improve their business model in town, act as liaison between the town and community boards and committees, the Chamber of Commerce, merchants associations, and other public, private, or nonprofit groups and associations interested in economic development. And almost the first statement in this resume, and I'd be happy to throw this into the record, is that it said, works under the general direction of the town manager. I think that's very important because this needs to be somebody who is pursuing the overall vision of the board and the town staff in how the town grows and how it prospers. And I think it works much better that way. I mean, there are-
Just let me, Henry, this, in fact, you know, in the preliminary budget of the town last year, there was an economic, I don't know what it's called, vitality.
Economic vitality or development?
Economic development.
Officer.
Yeah, officer.
And unfortunately, as a development process, as a budgeting process unfolded, it didn't make the cut. And we have already sort of discussed that in a preliminary way, that this is pretty high on our priority to push hard this year for-
I think time is very important because I think we're kind of on the cusp of where we're reaching an interesting point in the development of, you know, retail business and town centers. We went through the whole thing of local business being destroyed by the malls, and now the malls are being eaten by Amazon. And then people are potentially coming back to what local business has to offer because you can get something for a local business you can't get from Amazon, you can't get from the mall. And we're starting to see vacancies, and vacancies are not being filled. You see the Hammond Office on Thero Street, the rug store is gone. It's taking a very long time to fill vacancies in Concord Center. And there are many reasons for that. But, well, just let me, but it becomes a, it's a process that accelerates because the more vacancy there is, the less the-
I agree, but I- I'm Greg Higgins. I live on Codex Lane. I'm president of the business partnership, have been for a couple of years. And in a broader sense, what we have done over the last three, four years is have people like BJ Dunn come in, and we've sort of, the origin of this organization is from landlords. It was a group of landlords. It's morphed out to 40-plus different business-type folks in the community. And because the downtown areas especially are kind of in a fair-to-good condition, and we'd certainly like them to be in a good-to-very-good condition, and it seems to be trending in an opposite direction, we began to bring people in from the cultural community, from recreation, health, it just, and culminating with what Henry speaks of is this environmental, I mean-
Vitality.
Vitality. I can't just keep, I don't want to say the D-word, so. Vitality person, but that's sort of, it seems to be where we've ended up having done this long process of bringing people on. And I think it's, it may be a wise way to go because I think sustainability of the business community is really the key. The landlords are telling us, and they sit in the group, but there's other ones that don't belong, that they're having a hard time getting a backlog of tenants to call when something happens. It's just diminished down to now they have to literally go out and shake the weeds. I mean, I'm not crying for them, but that's not breeding a healthy business community.
Well, no, my point only is that I think, I think we are all of a like mind with respect to this vitality officer.
Yeah, I wasn't speaking directly. I was trying to broaden it out.
I get it, but I think that's something, but we're going to need help and support as we move ahead in the budgeting process.
Right.
To try to make that stick this year. Carol?
Carol Wilson, 419 Main Street. I'm also on the Concord Business Partnership and have been for a number of years on the board, former president. And one of the really wonderful things about the partnership is that part of our mission is to recruit people to get on town boards, to be more engaged with what's going on in government, to help businesses. So most of us, if not now, certainly in the past, have served on boards. The other comment is that the need for someone to think, you know, sort of proactively, strategically, sort of reaching across the table to help other people find tenants and make sure that we're not only developing, but that we're healthy, that we're developing in a healthy fashion. And this has been talked about for at least in my recent memory for the last 15 years, back to, you know, the first comprehensive long-range plan in 2005. Steve and I were on it. We were on the economic development component. We talked about needing someone that really, that could take an ownless and reach out to other communities, be talking with landlords, being aware of when you think you may be looking, you may have space available, and kind of, sort of engaging many people in the process of making sure that we're bringing people in that are going to actually contribute to the health of the town, and helping them understand the process, which we all know can be very cumbersome, of getting the approvals and getting your parking and getting your sign approved so that it becomes a pleasure to deal with people in town and be the community where people want to come. And certainly, that was the experience that the fellows from Brookline and Hudson and Bedford and Lexington shared with us, that they really were enjoying what they were doing, they were engaging with the nonprofits, with Minuteman National Park, with landlords and the tenants and the community to try to improve the business environment that essentially creates jobs, supports their nonprofits, and, you know, and makes the town a healthier place. So I just commend you for really kind of bringing this, you know, up to the point where we're actually talking about it around this table because it's-
Well, also just let me add to that, you know, this is broadly important, not just to the business community as well, but, you know, it goes to the issue of town character. When people think and describe town character, what they're often describing is either National Park or the downtown areas, you know, sort of that. So I mean, this is not a parochial, a parochial issue.
It's an experiential.
This is something very fundamental to the town. Deborah?
Yeah, and I-
Tell us who you are.
Deborah Stark from Deborah's Natural Gourmet, and I live in Acton. And I'd love to serve on town boards. We own real estate in Concord. That's where our business is. You're asking what you can do for us? We'd like to be able to serve on town boards.
You can.
Can I? I was told no.
Peter Mahler served on one of the governance committee, and he didn't live in Concord.
You-
Well, so I learned something.
Yes, well.
We'll figure out. You may regret.
I can wiggle off.
Yes, be careful what you offer.
Yeah, yeah.
But I want to speak for my staff. We have 57 staff, and they're all really proud to work in Concord. Many of them live in Concord, many of them don't. Those who can walk to the store, that's great. All of the sidewalks need help. But for most of our staff, we pay for off-site parking. We pay John Boynton so our staff can park out of the center and out of the way of our store so that we have room for people who want to shop. We have trouble getting people to take a job who come from Lowell or come from towns that are distant because there's no way, there's no public transportation to come to Concord to work. So that's important for us. And we're all looking for someone in town who can be our cheering section. We know this board is, but there's, if there were that economic vitality officer who could be the liaison between the citizens, between the town, and between the businesses, we would feel that we were seen and heard. Right now, I feel that we're seen and heard when nonprofits come and are looking for donations. I feel we're seen and heard when the town, you know, gets fees from all the licenses we have to pay. An example, we have a carer table in the front of our store. It has, I think, seven or eight chairs around it. We pay a fee for every one of those chairs for a customer to be able to sit at the front of the store and share community with other people. So we need that person that is our, has all of our best interests at heart to build that sense of community. And I think I'll stop there because this is past my bedtime.
One important point is that this is not just about serving outside people who want to come into town. The need is just as great for the local merchants and local business people to have some support from somebody who is, whose role is going to be more affirmative than just giving them a copy of the regulations, just saying, here are the forms to fill out.
Got it. Steve, Mr. Verrell?
Steve Verrell, 415 Plainfield Road. On the transportation, Deborah, there's a right-of-way that goes from behind your place right to Lowell. And if you ever could put a railroad in there, I mean.
You can bike there soon.
You remember when it ran.
I do. Actually, it's late, so I don't want to take a long story, but about 40 years ago, we got a call in the middle of the night. We have a pasture we rented over in Subry. It was right beside the railroad track. The engineer from the train called, and he stopped the train and helped us put the cows in at 2:00 in the morning. But I think it's late and a lot's been said, but I think a lot could be done to streamline the permitting process and, I can't tell you, I can't count all the permits off my fingers. But it seemed like that could be on one page, the regular permits we get every year and not keep having another one every week we have to go through and do that. A lot of simple things like that could be, help the businesses.
Bill, I didn't give, you handed us your-
I should pass out some facts that I just wanted to read off to you, and you could read along with me.
Somehow these facts look familiar to me.
That was going to say.
Hudson, Mass. had 23 vacant stores in 2008. They formed a Hudson Borough Vitalization Committee. I went through, Mike, you're going with me, for one of them. The merchants requested to remove the parking meters. They did, and replaced them with two-hour signs. The police chief secretary told me, everyone respects the two-hour meters. They no longer have to police them. They formed a committee that invited businesses to come to town, fulfill the vacant shops. Hudson has no vacancies in the town today, from 23 vacancies to zero. Now, these are facts. And in Maynard has 25 cent-an-hour parking meters. Albershawn Hardware was in Maynard for 70 years. Two years ago, they closed and moved to Stowe where they have free parking. The owner told me they left because there was no walk-in traffic. They're doing fine in Stowe. in Stowe. Lexington has parking meters similar to the ones we have in Concord. All retail businesses in Concord have closed. No one goes to Lexington shopping, except his Michelson Shoes, they're in there for a hundred years. Canada was considering putting parking meters in all of their state parks until they found out they would lose twenty percent of their business, so they gave up the idea. Parking meters caused twenty percent loss in business to small towns. Last winter after snowstorm, I drove to Hudson, arriving at eight AM in the morning, all the snow was removed for the streets and sidewalks, as you can see the pictures here, but this is extra town. When I came back to Concord, we had snowbanks in front of all our businesses in town, they left there for days. Retailers lose business when people cannot stop and get out of their cars. And there's no way we can make that money back again. Recommendations, I would suggest remove the parking meters, replace them with a three-hour parking sign, such as the one I have outlined in the back, which is covered with Concord grapes, which is making it look.
Beautiful sign, Bill.
Anyway, where were they? Remove all the business section, remove the parking meters, replace them with a three-hour parking sign. We need a three-hour parking, that's what it is today. Women come to town, they eat and they go around shopping, they spend three hours. Two women came in front of my shop last year, they got a parking ticket. So, I said, see, what happened? She said, well, look, this is the first time my girlfriend and I have been here. We did a little eating, we did a little shopping, now we got a fifteen-dollar parking ticket. We'll never be back to this town again, it's an unfriendly town. Now, they pass that on to everybody.
All right, all right. We, I appreciate the parking, you've raised it a number of times, but I think it still remains an issue, whether it's your suggestion of removing meters or some other parking still remains a problem for us in town that we.
Well, the parking meters don't take in any money.
They don't what?
They don't make money for the town. The cost is much to maintain them as does.
No, the money used in parking meters goes to support the maintenance of it and the enforcement of it, it doesn't come to the town.
They take in as much as they cost. They cost three hundred thousand dollars.
That's what he's saying.
I'd like to.
Three hundred thousand, so they're pretty much.
I'm not going to talk about parking meters.
Yes, please.
I think it would be useful for the town to conduct a study, a comparison study, of similar towns and what the retail mix is. I've often wondered if the retail mix in Concord is the right mix, because I've talked to, I was asked about a year or so ago to speak to a senior citizens group within Concord, and I asked them, well, do you go shopping in Concord? And they said, no. And I said, well, why not? I said, because the stores don't offer what I need. And that got me thinking, well, you know, maybe there's some, something there, and, you know, the vacancy rate that you were alluding to. I'm not sure, you know, the restaurants have figured it out. You go to the bank, you go for lunch, or you go to fifty-one Walden Street and you go out to dinner. But I'm not sure if you go to the bank in all places, because people go to the bank or the post office on a regular basis, where else would they go on a regular basis? You don't go out and buy dresses every single day, you don't go out and buy certain things.
Women are buying dresses every day.
I think the mix of what similar towns of, like Concord have, might be useful information, and that information, working with the building owners, to try to cultivate the businesses that will have a higher likelihood of success in Concord.
Well, and this goes back to remarks that Henry made about the impact of things like Amazon and things like that, that by itself is changing the retail mix.
Right.
Right.
Greg? In a more general way, I think the town, we need a tourism board in this, Lexington gets all our tourism, they send out, we have no brochures, in a general, just promoting the town in that respect. But the one thing I think, and we've heard about permitting and all that sort of issues, if you think about it, who can afford to open a store in this town? And we don't want it to be only those that have huge pockets and deep pockets. And I think it's getting more and more in that direction. I know we had a town warrant article, which the partnership wasn't really in favor of, but it wasn't so much that we're in love with formula businesses, you may need a few of those to augment and cover the cost, but we need to make it so that the small person can open a business here and feels confident that they can and it won't, they won't have to hire a team of lawyers to do it. And the permitting process is laborious and I think has to do with residential development as well, but we're not here to speak about that.
Oh, I get that.
I just want to say, you know, Jane, to your point, I think certainly something like that would be what this position might be looking at, you know, is that what is the makeup of our business community, and are we going after the right kind of businesses? I also just want to kind of follow up on BJ's comment, because, you know, two thousand, you know, what is it, two thousand twenty-five, twenty twenty-five is right around the corner, and, you know, that's a big deal, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done for us to be ready for it, not only in transportation and parking and crowds, but, you know, we want to be a town that's inviting, we don't want to have vacancies, and we don't want them to be something that's slapped up there just to get through, you know, a year of festivities. We want them to be businesses that are really engaged and part of the community, and I think that this is a really good, positive way of doing some of those things, rather than trying to regulate who can come and who can't. This is really putting our best, you know, putting our best foot forward, and I'm glad you mentioned it, BJ, because I think that's, we all need to be thinking about that six years away.
And we don't need a feasibility study and a four-year pilot study to have a bus that would run from the depot to the national park.
We don't, we need money.
Right, right.
We have, what, sixty buses that are sitting there out in, where is it, Knox Trail, that are probably doing absolutely nothing during the height of the tourist season? You know, where are this, there are no schoolchildren using those school buses in the summer. And there are also during the school day, there are many buses in many periods of the day when those buses are not being used, and those belong to the town. And it makes it very cheap for us to try some alternatives.
I get, do you have a comment?
Yes, I think we've heard a number of really excellent suggestions, like streamlining permitting and parking and walkability and marketing. And the top recommendation that it sounds like is that you want the town to approve some type of economic vitality coordinator to report to the town manager.
Amen.
And be the cheerleader. And I, so I want to comment about that, because economic vitality is one of our very top priorities this year, and Mike is right, we need your help in getting it to stick this year. And what we really need, though, this is going to be a very tough question for you guys, are you willing to figure out how to get some of the funding for it? Because that's where we're going to get stuck.
Funding what?
Funding for the position. Because we've added recently a lot of positions, for right or wrong or whatever, but they're here now. So, we need your help to figure out a creative way to get grants, donations, whatever it is, a public-private partnership, to get this position going, because if you want it a hundred percent from tax dollars, it may not go through. So, we all have to work together, and are you willing to help us figure that part of it out?
But that's, but that's short-sighted, because where do the tax dollars come from? Tax dollars come from real estate taxes, right, that are generated by the value of the real estate that is occupied by mostly, aside from the residential tenants, the retail tenants, and one of the reasons, there are several reasons you have people living in expensive, high-value, revenue-producing homes, one of course is the school system, and the other is the fact that we have a town. We have a town. You look at Lincoln, they don't have a town.
Right.
You look at Acton, they don't have a town. You look at Carlisle, they don't have a town. People want to live here, they want to live here, many of them, because not only do we have a town, but we have a town that's surrounded by an area where people can walk to that town. So, I think to say it's not worth spending tax dollars to promote the vitality of that economy is pennywise and pound foolish.
Right, that's what I want to ask you guys, if, I'm not saying it's not worth it, I'm saying it's going to be a real difficult, it hasn't stuck in the past.
Can I, maybe I can interrupt for just one second and ask, in terms of getting help, I think one of the, you're hearing a lot of support amongst the select board for this position, let's just call it that. The question is, how do we, how do we craft the argument in a way that will withstand next year's budget cycle, right? So, knowing, for instance, there's been a lot of research referenced amongst all of you about other towns that have this, how did, you know, what, how long have they had it? In other words, what's the data behind this? Let's make the argument one that will, will expand beyond this room into ears that haven't thought about it.
I'd commend you on having this meeting in the first place, and I think if you get a regular meeting like this once a month or something, it would get worthwhile, because you're getting a lot of input from people.
Bill, I think our, I'm all for that meeting, as you know, I've met with you and other business folks over the course of the last couple of years. We want to try to turn this into some action. And in addition to the economic vitality person that we've talked about, and Terry's point of view may be right, but we have not discussed funding of this position at all, so I don't want to suggest that that's anything we've discussed. But in addition to all of the good things that you guys have brought up to us now in this economic vitality officer, one of the things we've been talking about, and Susan is really taking the lead on this, and that is whether or not a committee, whether it's a task force, by that, all I mean is a term-based committee that's charged with something, or a standing committee around.
Economic Development Committee meeting, how about that?
Something would be helpful. So, it kind of piggybacks off Bill's remark about the select board meeting on this once a month, that's probably not going to happen. But if we, would it be a good.
A better idea.
Say what?
I think a committee idea is probably a really.
Well, I don't know, but that's one of the things we're talking about, and Susan has been working on, is either a standing committee that would be, you know, if we ever got an economic vitality officer in place, it would work with that person, just like, you know, the planning people work with the planning board and that kind of stuff.
Can I make, oh, go ahead, no.
You know, we did have the four communities in, and I suppose a committee, I'm not sure it would need to be a standing committee, in the sense that they didn't seem to need one. What was, in December's meeting, what was really evident was that they, there were communities like Hudson that were struggling, Bedford was struggling in the center, and Lexington was having issues that we're currently going through, and they've all begun to significantly turn their centers around. And I think a committee would hear that and be able to speak that in a broader sense. You have a bunch of people that are business-oriented coming into rooms. Terry's argument is perfectly valid, you know, you can do anything you want, but if we go to that high school in April and it doesn't get voted, it doesn't matter. So, it, there's a significant load that you've got to get through to get this to happen, whether it's a vitality officer or some, something else. Just to explain to people that the town has, I don't think they're anti-business or anything, but they've sort of been silent on business, business has been, we're not an activist group, even though we're sitting here this evening. We've sort of been under the covers, and we talk amongst ourselves, it's not a secretive committee at all, but you're all invited. But at this point, I think their activism has to start happening, and Terry's point about eating the fun, you know, getting the political capital in line is completely valid.
Well, and I think that's to Susan's leadership and Mike's comments, that's what a task force might then, it would be specifically focused at a time, on a timeline.
And I would suggest that you reach out to segments of the residential population, because one of the things, you talked about the character of the town, and you talked about the potential pushback. Again, I don't have a lot of statistical data to support what I'm saying, it's just what I hear from people over time. When they say "character of the town," many times I interpret the way they say it means I don't want any economic development in the town, I want the town to be like it was in the seventeen hundreds. I mean, they had economic development then, but it, I think, you know, I've gone to a lot of the planning meetings, and I'm always amazed when I hear the chatter in the back of the room about really being opposed to a lot of different things that are being discussed within the town, and I think that's an issue, that economic development is really not a very popular word based on what I hear on the street. Now, that's, again, it's not statistically significant, but it's.
One thing we might do is go to Hudson and see how they, they've done a great job in Hudson, I think we could go to them and find out what, how they solve their problem, because they've got a full town now, the town is booming from what it was two years ago.
It took me out there to retell.
But I think I could get in touch with them and see if we could have a town planner or somebody come up.
Well, I think this committee could do that type of research, and I think we should have, well, we have kind of a draft charge that Susan wrote, and, but, and I don't remember right now, but we should have people such as Deborah on that committee, even if you don't live in town, that would be the perfect.
Something else to look at is there may be grants, state or federal grants for economic, they may call them economic development, but we could call it whatever we wanted, that are available to finance positions like this.
Do you volunteer to look into that, Henry?
No.
No, that may be the case, although it's a lot of these kinds of things, Concord isn't the.
Right.
Or it's a one-hit wonder.
It's a one-hit wonder.
Right, you'll get the staff funded for a year, but it's, all we're doing is delaying the action.
We've done that for firefighters.
That's what I'm saying, we've done, we have a history of doing that, or sustainability officer.
Well, we've got, I greatly appreciate you guys taking your time out and coming with us tonight, BJ, you included. Susan, you've got a lot of input here to sort of assimilate.
We figured, we figured we were the only group that would be willing to come on the week of the fourth to take their.
And we appreciate your airing us before miscellaneous correspondence.
You know, on the upside, Greg, your earlier comment about, you know, not having maps available or whatever, the rec. department has just recently hired, I'll say, a marketing person.
Exactly.
Who's going to look at regional outreach and coming up with a plan so that more information does get out to other people's websites, the right people who are promoting tourists to come to.
We're doing, we're doing a lot of things, like talking about bikes and talking about, BJ's talking about us, but coordinating it all is the issue, and sustaining that coordination is where I see the thing falling down. You can get juiced up and then.
Well, the business partnership is already an organization, so maybe it could be.
Can we shut his mic off?
If they could get the maps in a PDF format and online, that would be a tremendously helpful addition, because the maps are good.
And getting the information out to hotels and bus, tourist bus and all kinds of, that's the focus of this.
This week I got three calls, and I'm not even in the tourism area anymore, three calls about the historic sites. So, I happen to keep old maps online, and so I print them out and I send them to people. But if I had an up-to-date map, I would send those, the maps to people as well, because it's useful.
Well, that, I think that's part of the whole, part of the thinking behind this, was that Business Partnership is working on some of the same things that the National Park is working on, and, and to get everyone around the table, all these stakeholders, so that it would reduce duplication of effort, and there could be some really interesting results. So, to be continued, thank you.
Lady gentlemen, thank you very much, we greatly appreciate it, and I hope we'll be able to move forward on this. Happy for it to all of you, and thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Lots of good discussion. Are there any other public comments, seeing none? Committee liaison report, Susan?
Yep. Okay, the build, Middle School Building Committee had its first meeting on June eighth, and.
Folks, 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 Mr. Verrill?
I wanted to let you know something, I got some mail today from a black mailman that came in, and I says, is this blackmail?
Sorry?
I got mail from a black mailman come in today, and I says, is this blackmail? I'm luckily here, luckily here.
Good night, Mr. Montague.
So, the first meeting of the Middle School Building Committee was held on.
So, the first meeting of the middle school building committee was held on June 18th. There were 12 of the 17 members were there, and some of those positions were, were, have not been filled, like town manager and the facilities manager of the schools, schools was there, but he had just started the job. So he wasn't, he hasn't been appointed onto the committee. And there were a few people that were absent. Anyway, it was a very productive meeting. We did not choose, choose leadership. That's going to be deferred. We're going to start meeting at 7:30 in the morning on Thursdays, beginning July 11th every other week. And that, we recognize, will, the timing will change depending on what phase we're in. And, but that's kind of the, to get everybody to put it in their calendar. And the people who, the people who were there that work in Boston were, said, "Fine." You know, they could block the time. And so, one of the things that happened is there's a group within the committee that's going to be working on the RFP for OPM, the owner's project manager. And we expect to have some information on that on July 11th, when we meet again. But it was, there's a lot of enthusiasm and, and good comments and good comments from people in the audience. June 25th was the Trails Committee, and they're, they're monitoring the trails and doing a great job. Also, the Planning Board. That night, they didn't really have any hearings, but they followed up on the discussion, the previous meeting about auxiliary-
Accessory?
Accessory dwelling units. Thank you. And kind of fine-tuned it and, and as to what the parameters were that they were going to suggest. And then they started the discussion on duplexes in certain areas at will, in certain zoning areas. And were trying to go through the same process of, of getting their arms around what they thought they might recommend. And that, this is all, and then the next couple of discussions will be on PDRs, like in closer to town, to town PDRs versus further out, and maybe they'll recommend different criteria. But all of this is a prelude to, to presenting, having a lot of public meetings, disseminating this information and getting feedback, and hopefully to prepare something for town meeting.
Susan, let me just comment that I have invited the Planning Board to come to our meeting on the 29th to talk about these initiatives, because they dovetail a lot with our, our initiatives around affordable housing. And I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, and to hear exactly what they have up their sleeves and what they're still talking about. So that'll be on the 29th that they're going to join us.
Right. And then the only other thing, four of us were there on the 26th for the West Concord, the meeting about the bridge, the West Concord Bridge. So, the architects presented very, very preliminary ideas about what style, and they had some very rough, to be refined, cost estimates. And there was, there were comments about how, you know, paying for it, and whether the business community over on Bakerav would be willing to, to help with that.
Partnership on that?
Yeah.
And also the location of the-
Oh, right. Then there were, there were, they discussed four possible locations, and, and based on feedback, it, it was narrowed down. So it was really, it was good, there were two sessions. We were all at the first one. And I look forward to hearing more information about it, but it sounds like there's a lot of enthusiasm and support.
Very interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, very interesting. Thank you. Linda?
I attended a CPC meeting. They didn't have a quorum. It was their information meeting. They didn't have a quorum. We have a couple of nominations on the agenda tonight, so hopefully that'll take care of it for the next meeting. But they still did hear about one potential project that are coming forward to ask for funds. And I just thought I'd mention it, because it is restoration of the steeple at the First Parish Church, which is owned by the town.
Oh.
Oh.
And-
Oh, I feel like there's going to be a discussion-
Yeah, there'll be an interesting, there's going to be, there's going to be a very interesting discussion about that. But I, I just wanted to, to mention that, because I thought that was interesting.
Wow.
Really?
How can we own a steeple of a church?
The clock, the clock.
But, I mean, that just, wow.
So does that mean, I apologize for this, does that mean that we have the decision about putting a cell tower in the-
Well, yeah, I'm best-
It's, it's-
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, it's, it's-
I was looking at that, but I'm also thinking about the separation between church and state.
Church and state, yeah. Yeah.
Well, the separation of church and state is a, in this town, is a relatively new-
Well, this is an interesting-
Well, it's going to be an interesting-
Historic element.
Go ahead, Linda.
Interesting discussion. The new inner I StarMet reuse planning committee is up and running. There was a, a push to get that committee seated, and because the firm that's been hired by the EPA, associated with EPA for doing the planning of the rest of the cleanup and so forth, met with the committee that, last week, right, as soon as, just in the nick of time of getting people there. And that was very interesting. A website has already been set up for that committee with some key documents, so, and, and some schematics of certain areas, planning areas that are available on that land. So I encourage you to look at that. Interesting information.
And we have both steving and, and Gary climbing on that.
Yeah, the first two meetings, we may not be finished with seating that committee, because at, at least the next two meetings are at eight o'clock on a Friday morning. And so one of the committee members going forward may not be able to make that time, so we may have to look at that.
No, but my point is, I, I see efficiency and planning as, as-
Absolutely.
...restraints.
Try, we tried to have the, a group of people who would know how the town operates, have done previous planning exercises and so forth.
And, and Linda, were you able to go on that site visit?
I sure did.
Okay.
It was raining in mudslides and everything.
Oh, no. Yeah. So I was planning to go-
Hopefully not in any-
I'm, I'm hoping they might do another one at some point, because I was, I was planning to go, I had to go out of town unexpectedly.
Sure, sure. I'm sure there'll be opportunity in the future. I also attended the Hatts meeting, and Tammy Correa and the new representative for Lexington and Wilburn, Madeline Ciccolo, if I'm pronouncing her name correctly, was there. They talked about their particular areas of interest. Transportation is high on the list for both of them, so that was good to hear. They, I think, were realistic about the limitations of a first-year incumbent in terms of influence and committee assignments and so forth, but both of them were very energetic and are trying to break that norm of the first-year incumbency. So that was good. Hanscom Field, they talked about a new route that's been added between Concord and, and Nantucket, and-
A new air, air line?
Yeah, a new, a new route.
Does that explain some of the-
At least for the summer. And, no. And they said some of the activity that people, some of our citizens were bringing to our attention and complaining about, they felt was related to the Stanley Cup.
Ruins.
Ruins, yeah, yeah, yeah. And in fact, um-
So it was private planes coming in and out for them?
Right. And the, at least one of the citizens who complained was also at this meeting and acknowledged that it has let up. So some of it-
Is the, is the new route, that's a public carrier that's, that's operating out of-
It's coming off the short lane, so that is going to, you know, people in Concord will be-
So that's a commercial?
But it's a commercial.
Commercial.
Regular scheduled commercial?
Regular scheduled commercial.
I didn't, I didn't know that was possible.
So, it's new. The-
Well, I thought there were restrictions, restrictions on that.
Yeah, well, somehow it's operating. The other, the only other thing I would mention there is that the new fire department facility was being moved into at the end of the month and right now, I guess. So I know that our fire department is looking forward to that.
Relief.
Yeah.
I would just say, following up on the, we had had a correspondence from a citizen about it. I wrote the director of Masport at Hanscom, and she was very forthcoming in finding, went and found out what was going on, and wrote a detailed email, which I forwarded on to the citizen who wrote that. So she was quite supportive.
Very good. And I think Concord people had also talked to Tammy Correa, and she's scheduled a meeting on base and is going to be talking to some people there as well, so.
The base is around-
Not the base, I'm sorry, but airfield.
The airport.
Airport.
Carrie?
So that letter, that letter from-
The citizens.
Right, they got a reply from-
I wrote the director of the airfield and told her about our concern. She said she'd find out and get back to me. She emailed me. I forwarded it to him.
So it was taken care of, which is a wonderful-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Can you, can you, can we just circulate that copy so we know what happened?
It was essentially the Bruins. I mean, Linda-
Oh, that's it, the Bruins?
Yes.
Okay, never mind. That's close enough. Okay. Oh, and the two people that were going to be nominating for the-
Get to that after.
But they're not, they're not on the agenda tonight.
He's gone for us.
Okay, okay.
They came in today, so, chair, and he was there through the timeline, but then we were to have a few steps on us first.
Okay, great. Perfect, perfect. Okay, so just real quick, I went to the Assabit River Pedestrian Bridge. Excellent meeting. On June 27th, I went to the Finance Committee. They had a presentation. Mike was there also about the AAA bond rating, and they talked about capital planning and the guideline process. And then on June 28th, the COA had a volunteer luncheon. There were 140 volunteers. It was huge, amazing. Tammy Correa was there, and I was there. We both spoke for a couple of minutes, and we talked about that transportation grant.
Well, I have to, and I have apologized to some of the committees, but not all. I was a little busy for a period of time. But I was able to get to the PEG Access Advisory Committee meeting. And just, I want, I mentioned this earlier, but I just wanted to really crow on behalf of the hire of our new Anya, our new manager. She is really, not only, she's not just responsive, she's anticipatory. And there is a team working there that is, well, we already, we met a new hire tonight. But just by way of example, she handed out this as a station manager's report at the beginning of the meeting. We couldn't even get to all the bullet items on it, but, I mean, this is how transparent it is now. And I saw a lot of relief from multiple players because of, because of that access and transparency. Now, I will also mention, because this came up, this, the, the agenda was somewhat hijacked by a conversation about 5G. And the PEG Access Committee felt that it was appropriate under their jurisdiction, because 5G will impact the amount, the Comcast fund as it moves in, because it's going to diminish much more rapidly that, and in fact, Comcast is actually looking at some of that now. What was, there was a lot of discussion between two of the members of the PEG Access Committee, both of whom have expertise in this area. And I suggested to them that rather than making this a discussion for PEG Access, that the, just as we had, a while ago, we had a committee that was looking at technology and this, this area, that they might want to separately write to the Select Board with their sense of what is coming, and the timeframe, and how they're seeing this, this move forward. I don't, I don't follow 5G. It was certainly more alarming in terms of its likelihood and timeline than I had imagined.
And we had previously talked about ordinance that other towns are already putting in place.
Exactly. So it may, we may want to jump on this early enough to make some decisions for it. But I'm, the new committee chair, Scott, I'm missing his name here, Scott Hopkinson and Vince Carlson both have some significant interests, as, as does Jean Chang. They, they all have expertise in it. So don't be surprised if we hear from them. I suggested that we take that outside of PEG Access, and at least they can express it separately.
Let's try to get on top of that.
Yep.
I'll just follow up on that. So we'll get on top of the 5G. Just as a sidebar, we had had a draft of a technology committee-
Grant committee.
-that was put together, and it sort of got submerged as the technology group got focused on providing internet service to the town. I have sent the draft to Mark Howell, who's the CI over the town, and we've gone back and forth. And so I suspect that either our next meeting or the meeting after that, I'll be able to give that back to you, and we'll get it on the agenda. I don't think it's urgent, but we'll get it on the agenda for early in the fall to see what we want to do with that. All right, thank you, Jane. As Terry indicated, I attended the Finance Committee meeting, and it was a really good meeting. They met in the hearing room, because this was being used as a storeroom for some renovations in the town. The significant business item was a presentation of, a sort of bond rating. And it was very interesting, and went over how, how it was done, what were the important factors in determining a bond rating, what difference it made in terms of borrowing costs if you're in borrowings. It was a very interesting, very interesting proposal. They spent also a lot of time making sure they had sort of got their agenda coming forward, and connections to other committees squared away. So it was, as usual, a very interesting committee meeting. That, I would only go next to miscellaneous correspondence. I told you that we got a lot, but we really all covered it. I thanks again all the people who wrote to us about capital planning and economic vitality. I appreciate that very much.
And even the 5G.
And the 5G Sheldon Hines, he was of course here last week to talk to us about that. Also, I would mention that with respect to facilities, TBA, the consultant of town has, is using for facilities planning, is going to be on our agenda for August 26th. So I talked to them about whether they could make it. Remember, we're canceling our August 12th meeting, so whether they could make it for the July 29th or not. So they're going to be here for the 26th.
We are canceling August 12th.
We are, we are going to cancel August. We're going to answer, two of us are going to be out of town, so.
I just, in advance, August 26th.
She's going to miss the 26th.
I've got stuff to do.
A honeymoon?
All right. So next-
A question about that. Is the consultant going to be hopefully able to present some kind of preliminary something, and not just say, "We're working on it," but just, hopefully by then they'll have gotten to some kind of milestone where they can-
I hope so, but, you know, just, I don't want to take time, it's very late, but, you know, that, as opposed to the schools, I don't mean to minimize the school problem, but as opposed to the school, which their issue is build a school. Where are you going to build it? Well, right here where we live, because we, you know. But for us, we've, our problem is different than that. It's not just where's it going to be and what's it going to look like, but is it leased, is it buy, is it renovate? So it's a, there's a whole series of complicated questions before you get anywhere near what's it going to look like.
Right, right, right.
So, it's, it'll be a tricky one. So, committee nomination, so in addition to the two that are on here, do you know the, the two additions to add to this?
I do.
Okay, fine.
And I have, I have one to add to that.
Oh, you do?
Oh, you do?
One of the middle school facilities managers just got hired.
Yeah.
Was hired and it, I...
Okay, so...
Didn't get him in the queue.
That's all right. So you do yours and then you add him in.
Okay.
Or her, I don't know who it is.
Committee nominations?
nominations.
Yeah, for Susan Curtin of 169 Holdenwood Road and Kristin Morganti of 136 Baker Avenue to the Library Committee, Lee Smith of 1836 Main Street, and Keith Bergman of 56 White Avenue to the Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee, Peter Ward of 29 Pilgrim Road and Diane Proctor of 57 Sudbury Road to the Community Preservation Committee as select board appointees.
And...
And Russell Hughes, the facilities manager for Concord Public Schools, to the middle school building committee.
Thank you. And now, committee appointments.
Move to appoint Jim Terry of 368 College Road and Linda Miller of 300 Main Street to the Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee for terms to expire May 31, 2021. Andrew Boardman of 110 Philcrust Road and James Burns of 1515 Main Street to the NMI StarMet Property Reuse Planning Committee for terms to expire May 31st, 2021. Peter Lloyd of 5 West Vale Drive to the Concord Housing Development Corporation for a term to expire May 31, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I will note before we adjourn that we still have the people you nominated for the Housing Trust Study Committee, they are representatives...
Correct.
Of the, of the housing community? Mr. Smith and Mr. Bergman?
Mr. Smith and Bergman is at large.
Sorry?
At large.
At large.
He's at large, so he's a citizen.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then, next time we meet on the, on the 15th, we'll hopefully appoint them and then you'll be able to convene that committee because they'll have a quorum.
Right.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.